We'll call the Newport Beach City Council's regular meeting of May 13th to 2008 to order. A roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Webb is absent and he has an excused absence.
Okay, do we have a closed session report?
Yes, the council approved a settlement with the Peterson Family Trust to authorize the city for a purchase of right-of-way area along Superior Avenue to allow for construction of a traffic signal pursuant to the Hoag Health Center project. The agreement for settlement was approved tonight.
Okay, thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hen, followed by the invocation by Reverend Ty Trin of Our Lady Queen of Angels?
Please repeat the P. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for having me here. It's my honor to share this moment of prayer with you. Let us take a moment of silence in thanksgiving for all the wonderful blessings we have today. Almighty and ever-living God, Creator of the universe, the source of all goodness and love, we give you thanks for all your abundant blessings and gifts in our lives. We praise you for your good work accomplished in this city council and in each one of us and through us for all the people of this city and beyond. Give us the grace to become faithful and active citizens of this country. Open our hearts and minds so that we can work together with great love and respect for one another. Inspire us to be joyful public servants for the betterment of our society, so that together we may continue to give glory to your name now and forever. Thank you all for having me here and have a good meeting.
Thank you Reverend. The next item on our agenda is presentations. The first presentation we have this evening is the city recognition of the National Planning Award. I had the pleasure last week of attending the National Conference of the American Planning Association, which is the professional society for planners. And at that convention, the city was honored with one of only ten national planning awards, which is sitting right in front of me here. This award was given to the city for the hard-won victory, as it was called, for our general plan. It's a recognition of the high quality of the general plan that we have, the citizen participation and the community involvement that occurred as part of our general plan process. This is a very prestigious award. As I said, it's only one of ten given across the nation and we should be very proud of our city for receiving such an award. I can tell you that two of the judges that were on the jury came up to me at the convention and very highly complimented our city on the work that we did on our general plan and what a high-quality product and process it was. And it was something that really sets the standard nationwide for how cities should approach doing their general plans. I'd also like to compliment our staff. I don't know that they really got enough recognition during all of the hubbub, if you will, that went on with the general plan and the election, which a lot of cities, most cities, don't have as part of their general plan process. So I don't know that the staff fully was recognized for all of the hard work they put into it. And I don't know that many people realize the thousands of hours of staff work that went into the preparation of the general plan. I would particularly like to compliment our Assistant City Manager Sharon Wood, who spent countless hours working on this, putting up with phone calls from me and I think other council members. For many months, she was there virtually every night till seven, 7:30 at night, working on the general plan, working on it on the weekends. I know that we had some very strict and heavy deadlines that had to be met to get this general plan done in time to be on the ballot. And all of the staff members, I know people in our traffic engineering section, as well as other city departments that need to help the planners out on preparing a general plan, also worked very hard. So I would really like to compliment all of those, as well as Sharon, for her leadership and her dedication in pursuing the general plan. And I think Sharon's going to say a few words and then also show a short video that was played at the National Planning Conference, which I can tell you, when you see some of this video, a lot of it was followed by a lot of oohs and ahs from the people in the audience up there. I think there was, what, around 2,000 people at this luncheon that was presented at and it was an 8,000-member convention, so it was really a big deal. Sharon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I did want to mention some people specifically who were there working those long hours along with all of us. Of course, we had a good consultant team that was headed by Woody Tesher from EIP Associates. And there were a couple of staff members who have since retired, and I don't think it had anything to do with the general plan. Our former Planning Director Patty Temple and the former Transportation and Development Services Manager Rich Edmundston also put in an awful lot of time currently on the staff. City Attorney Robin Clausen was with me many nights and weekends getting the EIR together. Merrily Jackson, our Public Information Officer, helped us with publicity and got us so much coverage on cable TV. And then there are two current members of the Planning Department, and I'd like them to stand. Senior Planner Greg Ramirez and Planning Systems Administrator Dan Campaniolo. And Greg organized and coordinated and worked on all the elements of the general plan and the EIR and put together many of the public workshops. But the thing that the two of them worked on that I think was the most difficult was the general plan map and the famous anomaly table, which gave us a land use regulation system that's so much more rational and easy to understand and use than what we had had before. And then beyond that, the excruciating calculations for the analysis that was required for Charter Section 423. And there was no margin for error in that. They had to have it done on time and they had to have it done accurately, and they did it. So, thank you. And with that, Merrily can start its very short clip.
Each year, the American Planning Association singles out the best in plans, planning practice, and planning leadership. In 2008, we recognize individuals, communities, and regions throughout the United States and around the world for their outstanding accomplishments in planning. The awards being presented today also provide a tangible symbol of the importance of planning and the role it plays in making communities of lasting value. In 2006, residents took to the polls to vote on a new general plan for the city of Newport Beach, California. The new plan proposed shifting the city's historic, auto-dependent development pattern towards more compact growth that emphasized mixed uses, walkability, and less reliance on automobiles. On the same ballot, however, was a second question that, if passed, would require voters to approve each major development proposal in the city. The competing ballot initiative wasn't the only hurdle. Opponents also filed a lawsuit challenging the environmental impact report developed in connection with the new general plan. The city was well-prepared, however, having spent more than four years developing the new plan and building public support for it. In fact, development of the general plan involved the most extensive public outreach and visioning campaign in the city's history.
Well, first of all, it's been 25 years since we updated our general plan. And I think the single most important thing is the fact that we had so many of our citizens involved in it.
Holding public forums and workshops, using state-of-the-art technology to show real-time traffic modeling of growth scenarios, and other steps were all part of this outreach. When the ballots were counted in November 2006, the new plan passed with 53 percent of the vote. The outcome, said Mayor Ed Selich, will help keep Newport Beach a strong, healthy, and livable community.
The interesting part of that video is they asked for Sharon to send them video of all of the community meetings and everything, and then they asked for this B-roll, and they ended up using most of the scenic B-roll and very little of the community meeting footage she sent them. Thank you Sharon, Greg, and Dan. Okay, our next presentation is the Poppy Week proclamation. Do we have someone here representing Poppy Week?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, the audience. My name is Karen, Karen Nicholas. I am President of the American Legion Auxiliary, Unit 291, here in Newport Harbor. I reside at 655 Baker Street, Costa Mesa. I want to thank you for letting us join you today to request that Newport Beach City proclaim the week of May 18th through May 25th, Poppy Week. The poppy is in honor of the millions of Americans who have willingly served and who are currently serving our nation, all too many of whom have made the ultimate sacrifice. In the battlefields of Belgium during World War I, poppies grew wild amid the ravages of war. The overturned soils of battle enabled the poppy seeds to be covered, allowing them to grow and forever serve as a reminder of the bloodshed of war. In 1921, the American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy as the organization's memorial flower and pledged its use to benefit our servicemen and their families. Each nine-piece red poppy is handcrafted by hospitalized and disabled veterans, providing a financial and therapeutic benefit to those veterans who construct them. The auxiliary provides the materials and the veterans are paid a small amount for each painstakingly made flower. No matter what the cost of maintaining and supplying the poppy shops, the memorial poppy is never sold, but given in exchange for a contribution. Please help us honor these men and women by wearing the poppy during Poppy Week and on Memorial Day. I would now like to introduce you to our Miss Poppy, Rachel Hydeman, who is going to read you the poem "In Flanders' Fields." And she would also like to present each of you with poppy and would also like to have her picture taken with the city council. Thank you.
In Flanders' Fields. In Flanders' Fields, the poppies blow Between the crosses, row on row. That marks our place in the sky, the larks still bravely singing. Fly scarce, heard amid the guns below. We are the dead, short days ago. We lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow. Loved, and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders' Fields. Take up the coral with the foe. To you from failing hands, we throw the torch. Be yours to hold it high. But if ye break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flanders' Fields.
While she hands those out, I'd like to read a proclamation from the city of Newport Beach. The proclamation reads, "Whereas nearly 1 million members of the American Legion Auxiliary, the world's largest patriotic service organization of women, are asking every elected and appointed official of the local, state, and national level to wear a poppy on the observance of Memorial Day, May 26, 2008. And the poppy honors the millions of Americans who have willingly served and who are currently serving our nation, all too many who have made the ultimate sacrifice. And the poppy also honors the hospitalized and disabled veterans who make these red handcrafted flowers. The poppy continues to provide a financial and therapeutic benefit to those veterans who constructed them, as well as benefiting thousands of other veterans and their families by the revenues collected from poppy distributions. And in battlefields of Belgium during World War I, poppies grew wild amid the ravages of war. The overturned soils of battle enabled the poppy seeds to be covered, allowing them to grow and forever serve as a reminder of the bloodshed of war. Now therefore, I, Edward Selich, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to May 25th, 2008, as Poppy Week in the city of Newport Beach, California, and urge all residents to recognize the importance of the poppy and what it represents, a symbol of the price of war and the sacrifice of millions. And witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Newport Beach to be affixed this 13th day of May 2008." Okay, our next presentation is a proclamation recognizing the ocean rescue by Summer Watson and Amy DeChiro.
Mayor, council, we do want to recognize Summer Watson and Amy DeChiro. She's actually not here, and actually a representative is going to be Kirsten Alred from Toes on the Nose, and I'll have Sean tell you about a little bit of Toes on the Nose. But just real quickly, there was an incident a while back on 28th Street, and our contract employees, Amy and Summer, were there and saw a tragedy unfolding over by the jetty. Consequently, about the same time, our lifeguards were coming down the beach, but the initial contact was made by Amy and Summer. And she surely rescued, I think it was a brother and a sister, they probably would have died, because it was very rough at that point in time, they were going down, they made contact with them, and then our lifeguards came in and assisted them, but they made the first initial contact. So they're really to be commended for doing that, because we sure would have had probably two fatalities that day, and so for us, it's pretty important. They do work for us in a sense, they're contract employees, and I was going to have Sean just explain a little bit what that is.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, yes, we have our Surf Mama. Kirsten is our partner, and that's one of the classes, that's the class that was going on when the rescue took place. It's called Surf Mamas, and it's for moms, who are moms. And do you have any pregnant moms who do that?
Not yet.
No? So they also do some other classes with us, but we do, a lot of the service that we provide is done through contractors, and not only do they work for us, but they save lives. So that's something we're really proud of. We're proud of them and we're real thankful, so we just wanted to say thank you to them. Thank you.
I have four proclamations here, but they all read the same, so I'm only going to read one. But there's one for each of you. And the proclamations read as follows. Whereas on Wednesday, March 12th, 2008, at approximately 11:15 a.m., surf instructors Summer Watson and Amy DeChiro witnessed two young victims in three-foot surf needing assistance at 28th Street. And Summer Watson and Amy DeChiro, civilians and instructors for the Recreation and Senior Services Department, raced into the water to assist the victims, a nine and a seven-year-old brother and sister. And Summer Watson and Amy DeChiro risked their lives in going to the aid of the tired and panicked children. And these two rescuers were pulled underwater by the victims and were still able to hold the victims above water until help arrived. And lifeguard officers John Moore and George Leeper arrived on the scene to see Summer Watson and Amy DeChiro keeping the panicked and struggling swimmers afloat. And lifeguard officers John Moore and George Leeper swam out to bring the two victims to shore, and the two victims were saved due to the teamwork of these four individuals. Now therefore, I, Edward Selich, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the heroism and selfless courage against difficult odds demonstrated by Amy DeChiro, Summer Watson, John Moore, and George Leeper. And witness therefore, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the city of Newport Beach seal to be set and affixed this 13th day of May 2008." Okay, that concludes our presentations. Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like place on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, Councilman Hen?
Nothing. Excuse me. I have an announcement. In fact, I have a very happy announcement. No. Yesterday, a federal judge issued a tentative ruling that, in effect, authorized the city of Newport Beach to continue to execute the group homes ordinance that it passed in February of this year. That ordinance takes effect as it relates to the required filing of use permits on May the 22nd. The judge, in his ruling, not only upheld the validity of very substantial portions of the ordinance, but validated the fact that it was not discriminatory on its face, and, in effect, put the city in a position of executing against it going forward. There was an unfortunate newspaper article this morning that might have left a casual reader with a different impression. And that's because the judge did not authorize the city to execute the ordinance against a small subset of the rehab homes and group homes that are operating in the city. And that subset is the homes that are operating under licensed six-and-under authority from the state of California. That group of homes constitutes 20 percent of the bed count associated with group homes here in the city, which means that 80 percent of the bed count, and essentially the number of homes that are operating in the city, must now file use permits in order to continue to keep operating. Not only that, the city is now authorized also to continue to require that any newly filed application for a new location will have to go through a use permit process and would have to be located in a multifamily district. Furthermore, the judge also affirmed that the city has the right to continue to enforce the new fire code regulations with regard to those 80 percent of the homes that were authorized to be regulated going forward. Now, this was a tentative ruling. There is still litigation to be determined on all of this, but this is a major step forward for the city. We are looking forward, with the help of everyone, to make these ordinances as fair and effective as we can for all concerned. And we look forward to dealing with the use permits very promptly here. So this was in response to a suit that was filed by one of the largest, the B-largest operators, Sober Living, that had asked that the entire ordinance be invalidated. And the court held that that was not to be. And so, therefore, we are moving ahead to operate the ordinance in accordance with its terms until such time as we would be told not to. So there you go. We're very happy about this and we're moving forward. Robin, did you have anything to add on this?
Excuse me, no, I think you summarized it quite well.
Councilwoman Rosansky?
I think, thank you.
Mayor Protem Dagel?
Yes, I attended the opening day of several of the yacht clubs, and lots of history to these institutions. As they read the names of some of the former Commodores, you could see the families that helped build Newport Beach, the Glasgow's and the Fenton's and the Shockleys. And these yacht clubs are very membership-driven. They have very active populations. They have a race committee and the junior committee, right down to the kitchen. And I know I was at one of the yacht clubs for dinner and asked back, and the next time I went back, they didn't have the shepherd's pie on the menu, and I asked, and they said, "Well, different committee, different menu." So they are very membership-driven. And our local historian, Gay Wassel Kelly, she mentioned to me that there's now eight active yacht clubs in Newport Beach. Newport Harbor Yacht Club, which was founded in 1916, Bill Ficker brought home the America's Cup in 1967 to that club. The Balboa Yacht Club started in 1926. The Balboa Island Yacht Club started in the early 1920s for small boats and a focus on young sailors. The Lido Isle Yacht Club, which was launched after World War II. The Bahia Corinthian Yacht Club, 1958, that started. Shark Island Yacht Club was founded in 1960 and today is the Newport Beach Yacht Club. The American Legion Yacht Club was founded in 1966. And the Balboa Basin Yacht Club, 1990. And it's not a yacht club, but we also have the Commodores Club at the Newport Harbor Chamber of Commerce, and they've been very involved with activities around the harbor, including the 1935 flight of the lasers. So I wanted to wish everyone a fun and safe boating season. And I also wanted to, again, or to congratulate the staff, Sharon Wood particularly, on the general plan accomplishment. It was really a lot of hard work. And also Councilwoman Gardner, who chaired that committee. So, and of course, the mayor, who chaired the general plan update committee. So, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Gardner?
Presumably, you've all been training this past year. Got your running shoes. It's about time to start tapering down, June 7th, the Cronemr 5K. You can sign up that day, or you can go online and get an entry blank or go over to community services around town. So please, turn out. There's also a 1K walk. I'm not sure if there's a kids' run this year or not. I'll have to find out that, and I'll announce that next time.
Councilwoman Curry?
First of all, it's appropriate that we are coming up on Poppy Week. Because Memorial Day, we will dedicate the Day, we will dedicate the Newport Beach 1-1 Memorial in Castaways Park at 1:00. I invite everyone to come down. The statue will soon be in town. The site preparation's been done. It's going to be a great event commemorating the Marines of 1-1 and all of our veterans. And secondly, just to note that I think this is the first council meeting since the conclusion of the Film Festival, which was a tremendous success across the city. I hope many of you have the opportunity to go out, and will go out next year, because it really showed off Newport Beach to its very best and finest. And with Roy Disney and Richard Sherman and some of the great movies that we had, it was a great event for the city. And I congratulate the people involved in putting it on.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. The first one is that tomorrow evening, Speak Up Newport will be holding its monthly meeting at the Newport Beach Yacht Club at Bayside Drive and Marine Avenue. The subject's going to be water, what's happening on code enforcement. John Kapler from the City Code Enforcement Division's going to be making a presentation on what we're doing in terms of illegal dwelling units, garage conversions, residential property conditions, alley and refuse regulations, and also water quality issues. Questions and answers will follow the presentation. There's a reception from 5:00 to 6:00 with appetizers and a cash bar. The program's at 6:00 p.m. And bring your neighbors and friends, and guests are always welcome. The second thing I'd like to announce is the Newport Harbor Nautical Museum is going to hold its inaugural Buccaneers on the Bay Return to Point Royale fundraiser this Friday, May 16th, from 6:30 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The pirate-themed event will feature a silent and live auction, casino games, feasting, and grog, all to benefit the museum's expanding programs. To purchase tickets, please call 949-675-8915, extension 110. That's 675-8915, extension 110. Also coming up, it's the time of year for Balboa Island summer activities. The first thing is the Balboa Island Art Walk. That's Sunday, May the 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The 2008 Art Walk is going to feature over 90 artists exhibiting original oil paintings, acrylics, watercolors, glass, ceramics, sculpture, jewelry, and photography along the South Bayfront on Balboa Island. Balboa Island's tough to get onto sometimes, so there's going to be a parking and shuttle service available at the old Nautical Museum parking lot at Coast Highway and Bayside Drive. And that shuttle service will run from 8:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Also coming up is the Balboa Island Parade. That's Sunday, June the 1st. It's the only parade where the parade is actually two times as long as the parade route itself. And this year's theme is going to be Balboa Island, It's a Small World, and I hope they don't play that song over and over again. And then last announcement I'd like to make is Relay for Life is this weekend, May 17th, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. on Sunday, May the 18th. The Relay for Life is a fun-filled overnight event to benefit the American Cancer Society, where everyone can participate in the fight against cancer. There's teams of 10 to 15 people or more from all walks of life who camp out at Newport Harbor High School and take their turns walking and running around the track. Each team is asked to have a representative on the track at all times, while special entertainment, music, and other fun activities keep things lively. This is an event for people of all ages and levels of fitness, and is open to everyone in the community, with teams formed between friends, families, schools, and coworkers. You don't have to be a member of a team to participate. Individuals participate in strong numbers, too. No matter who you are, there's a place for you at the Relay for Life in Newport Beach. And this year, I've volunteered to serve as team captain and reactivate the Newport Beach City Council. This is current and past council members, called the Council Critters Team. As of today, we have, I think, 35 members in our team, and we've reached 50 percent of our financial goal. This year's theme for Relay for Life is Relay Like a Rock Star. And so, we decided that because Newport Beach is all about surf, sand, and fun, that the Council Critters campsite theme is going to be Relay Surf Rock Style. Everyone's going to be wearing Hawaiian shirts and board shirts for a great cause. And we're going to be holding a fantastic silent auction at our booth with some very cool items to auction off. Kids, pay attention to some of this stuff. We've got four waveboards donated by Street Surfing LLC. We've got an autographed Tony Hawk skateboard donated by Quicksilver. Quicksilver's also going to be donating some items that are autographed by surfing superstar Kelly Slater, also donated by Quicksilver. And our coup de grâce is right behind me here. A lot of you look old enough to remember Dick Dale, but this is a, this is a classic Fender Stratocaster guitar that's been personally autographed by Dick Dale. On the bottom here, it says, "Dick Dale, King of the Surf Guitar." And he also autographed up on the headstock. And this is bound to be a great collector's item, so would really like to get people out to bid this thing up and really see a lot of money go to the American Cancer Society, as well as someone going to have a real classic to add to their collection. You can't have too many motorcycles or guitars, so anybody that's a guitar collector might want to bid on this. In fact, I might have to bid on it myself. I should have brought my hand. I could have hit you with the miserable version of Mr. Lou. But that guitar, by the way, was donated by the Fender Guitar Museum, and Dick Dale obviously autographed it. We have a case that goes with it that was donated by the Guitar Center in Fountain Valley. And this year, we're going to be dedicating our campsite in part to Dick Dale. He is a Newport Beach icon. He's fighting his own battle with cancer right now. He would have liked to have been with us this year, but we want to give him a big shout out and thanking him for his support, and to let him know that we're thinking about him and hoping for his complete recovery from cancer. We've also got some other special items that we'll be auctioning off. All these proceeds are going to go to the American Cancer Society, but you're going to have to come by the Council Critters campsite to see what we have in store. If you want to register to participate in Relay for Life Newport Beach, simply log on to www-relayforlife.org, or call 949-357-5747. So, I hope that everyone watching and everyone here will get out and participate in Relay for Life and pass the word on to all your, all your friends about this cool guitar, because we'd really like to see it go for a lot of money to help the American Cancer Society. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, Items 1 through 22, are considered by council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, Councilmember Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Curry?
No items.
Councilman Hen?
Nothing.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Daigle?
None.
Okay, I have none. Does the staff want to pull anything?
Yes, the planning staff has asked to have item number 6, the Hoag Hospital, removed.
Okay. Does anyone from the audience wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it back for motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Items 1 to 22, pull item number 6.
Okay, please vote.
The motion carries.
Okay, staff?
Jim Campbell wanted to point out to the council that an item, I believe Councilmember Daigle recognized this, but there was an item that was taken on August, on April 16th, when the council introduced it, with regards to monitoring the noise mitigation and an annual assessment of compliance with the noise requirements, and that was not included. And so, you have been provided the sample language that was supposed to be included in the agreement.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Would you please explain what it says?
Certainly. Unless I gave my last copy.
Jim, you might also want to identify where it goes.
Okay, just for the benefit of those in the audience, item number 6 is the Hoag Memorial Hospital Presbyterian Master Plan Update and Development Agreement.
And there is copies, there are copies of these in the, outside for the public to review. The council acted to require annual noise monitoring, as the city attorney indicated, and this occurred on April 16th. There was really two sentences I wanted to add to Section 5.4 of the development agreement that we inadvertently left out, and it indicates that the report, and the report is really the annual compliance report that would come forward to the city council each April. The report shall also include a noise regulation compliance assessment that includes noise measurements prepared by a qualified noise consultant on a yearly basis. The noise assessment shall identify noise regulation compliance issues and recommended measures to abate any non-compliance. This is consistent with the council's action of the 16th, and we want to make sure it made it into the ordinance.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Campbell? Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on item number 6?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Wendy Kaiser. I'm a resident at 270 Cagney Lane, and I wanted to commend the city on their award for the planning. And I think I saw myself and my husband up in that one still shot. I recognized his plaid shirt. It was a wonderful process. I digress from the topic, but I just wanted to applaud you for all that great work. And I guess, being new to Newport, relatively new at the time that we did the master plan and the public interjection into that process, I have appreciated, again, with the Hoag situation, having the input from the residents and from Hoag in the dialogue that has ensued. And I would like to see, still moving forward with the plan number 6 on the agenda tonight, that the city council continue to explore the COGEN plant, and the, in particular for me, the fumes that are the emissions from the engines. And I would like to see more discussion about the suggested solutions proposed by Flor Corporation, which the city hired to look into it. And I don't think there's been enough discussion in public about the pros and cons of the different approaches and what would work long-term. And so, I would appreciate if we could have more time to look into those issues, as well as review all the materials that have just come out for the additional wording to the development plan, so that we can have our council review it and additional time to absorb the changes suggested and the possible ramifications. I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach, and I want to say that I think that Hoag is a wonderful hospital. And I've spent many, many evenings in the emergency room there over the past 10, 12 years. And I've spent many, many nights in the hospital, not myself, but other family members in my family, and they have always done an outstanding job. And there was a time when the ER wasn't the best, but they did a great thing, and they decided that they would privatize the ER, and so the emergency room is now handled by a different company of doctors. And when that wasn't enough, they actually got hospitalists that are in the ER now. So, when you get there, if your doctor isn't there, they actually read your reports and talk to you, and they have a really, you know, like phenomenal hospital. And I just would, you're going to be doing these annual reviews on Hoag, and what I would honestly like that maybe you could ask at the time, is that any time during this annual, you know, review every April, perhaps you could ask them what changes they might be making to the hospital that might impact all of the residents and families that live here. For example, we, you know, we recently found out, and that was what I passed out to you, was that on April 1st, they were going to be taking, you know, children up to Chalk. And I sent an email around and put my name on it, "Did you know? Do you care?" Because a lot of families still didn't know that when they went to Hoag, if they had to stay overnight, their child was going to be transported via ambulance to Chalk or to Fountain Valley or to whoever could take their children. And so, what I got in an email form from several different people is this thing that I sent to you, because I wanted it to become part of the minutes for the community, because these, see, I think that what happens is when these things happen, that Hoag has, Hoag is a great hospital. They have a great PR firm. They're fifth in the country on monetary endowment. They have a billion dollars in the bank. They could come to the city council. You could do like a receive and file, so everybody could understand what's happening, instead of a sidebar in the, you know, like in the Daily Pilot. And what I got in an email to me that wasn't, that has no really traceable authenticity, but I have to believe this is a really real document, it's a transition of inpatient pediatric care to Children's Hospital of Orange County, Chalk, and it's a question and answer. And there's like eight questions with answers, which are well-done. And then there's the Daily Pilot article that we got. And so, I just think that, you know, we have a lot of children in this community. There was a time when we were having a lot more elderly people than children, but in the past 12 years, the demographics of our city have changed. And anything that impacts an entire community, you're here for health and safety, and I think that you have to get the word out with Hoag. And I know they can do a good job to do this, and I don't think that this is really a good example of how good a job they can do. And I'm very happy they're here, and they do a good job for everybody, and I just wished they could have worked a little bit better with the residents around Villa Balboa, because again, none of you sitting up there would like to live and look at that plume and be by that plume every day. So, anyway, thank you again for your time and your consideration for making some adjustments in the future so that the public can know what's going on in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the hearing, bring it back to the council. And I've got a question for Mr. Leeper. We continued this to allow the residents additional time to review the ordinances that were introduced on April the 16th to the meeting tonight. And before we vote on the item, I'd like you to confirm that the ordinances before us reflect all the actions taken by the city council when they were introduced April the 16th. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
And then, there have been no further changes to the ordinance since April 16th, other than clerical or formatting changes? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, David. With that, I think that the changes shown on the staff report reflect my understanding of the action taken by the city council on introduction of the ordinances on April the 16th. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the ordinances, the recommended action in our agenda tonight.
I would so move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, please vote.
The motion carries.
Okay, the next item is oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilmember Gardner?
We went up, the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee met off-site this week and toured a new structure up at Poppy and Fifth Avenue. We've had some erosion problems because of all the water that's been coming down Buck Gully. And right now, it doesn't look very good, because there's a sort of barren, as you know, when you scrape the ground. But we were also taken over to Morning Canyon, where they did the same type of project several years ago, and you can't even see most of the structures. It looks very natural. So, we're looking forward to, the willows are starting to take, take hold there at Fifth and Poppy, and it will be a good example of erosion control that we'll also try to be doing down at the lower reaches of Buck Gully in this coming year.
Okay, Councilman Curry?
Councilmember Gardner and I participated with the Newport Course Advisory Committee yesterday, where we discussed the excessive speed of some cars traveling along San Joaquin Hills. The police department was, was very forthcoming in terms of being able to put out a monitor to track the speed of the 8,000 cars that traveled on that corridor during the course of the weekend, and provide some very good information to the residents regarding speed and enforcement in that area, to talk about some things that could be done to reduce speeds in, in the Newport Coast, although it does not look like we can change the speed limit on San Joaquin Hills due to state law at this point in time.
Okay, Councilman Hen?
Nothing.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Daigle?
None, thank you.
Okay, and I have no oral reports.
Nothing.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Reports, Tim Deagle?
None.
Okay, and I have no oral reports. So the next item on our agenda is public hearings. Our first public hearing is a public hearing to consider the award of a non-exclusive solid waste collection franchise to Universal Bobcat and Holling Incorporated. Does anyone on the council wish a staff report on this? Okay, no staff report is necessary. I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the hearing, bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to move the item as recommended by staff.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is the Newport Beach Brewing Company, use permit number 3485-2920 Newport Boulevard. It's amending condition number six and adding condition number 28 to use permit 3485. Staff report on this one?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, back in August of last year, the city council did amend use permit 3485 for the Newport Beach Brewing Company, making a variety of changes to the conditions of approval, to assist and curtail some certain activities to make the land use a little more compatible with the neighborhood. The brewing company did file suit against the city, and the city council has chosen to settle that lawsuit. Part of that settlement is to amend the conditions number six and add an additional condition, and the resolution before the council this evening does reflect the settlement agreement that the council has entered into. So condition number six relates to the size of the net public area available prior to 5:00 PM during the week and on the weekends, and we're making amendment to that to change that back to only apply Monday through Friday. And the additional new condition is condition number 28, relates to the ability for the brewing company to apply for special rent permits. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Campbell? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to address the council on this item? Please step forward. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close it and bring it back to council for action.
I'll move the action.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next public hearing is Tommy Bahamas at Corona Del Mar Plaza. This is a request to amend the use permit to permit an additional 400 and square foot, 481 square foot additional outdoor dining patio. Do we have a staff report on this one?
Mayor, I guess we've had some miscommunication here. Janet Brown was going to do the staff report on this one. I guess I'll step in to do it on her behalf. Just going to turn to it. This was an appeal from a planning commission failure to approve the request for additional outdoor dining at the Tommy Bahamas at Corona Del Mar Plaza. There was a three, four vote in favor of the approval. As we indicated in the staff report, you're allowed up to 10% of your net public area to be set aside for outdoor dining and not required to provide any additional parking with a maximum of 1,000 square feet. Tommy Bahamas already had that much outdoor dining area. They requested the additional square footage, and the planning commission, after considering the facts, decided that, in fact, parking was a problem at Corona Del Mar Plaza, and that there was no basis for approving the additional outdoor dining area. Since that time, the applicant did appeal the planning commission decision and let us know that, in fact, there was something that we hadn't told the planning commission, in fact, that they were having a net reduction of, I believe it was two seats in total outdoor dining, even with the proposed additional, or excuse me, total seats, even with the additional proposed outdoor dining. They appealed, requested that the city council approve the use permit for the outdoor dining as originally presented to the planning commission, and that's before you to make.
If we, if we approve the appeal, does that permanently limit the amount of indoor seating, or are they allowed to add those seats back in?
We had that condition to the proposed conditions of approval. That would limit the seating to that which was indicated in the revised report.
So if we approve this, it's a permanent net reduction of at least two?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gardner?
Have we heard from the neighbors, other restaurant business, or other businesses there, as far as concerns about the parking?
No, ma'am.
Or anything from the landlord?
No.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Leppo. Okay, is the applicant or their representative here? Can you step forward?
Good evening. My name is W.C. Wells, and I'm the president of Tommy Bahamas Restaurant Division. Thank you for giving us the time to talk to you gentlemen tonight, and ladies. As you probably know, we've been in the neighborhood for nine and a half years. We were one of the original tenants at, at the Corona Del Mar Plaza. About a year ago, we started having conversations with our landlord about extending for another 10 years, and when we reached an agreement on that, we decided that we wanted to make some changes, mostly changes in remodeling the restaurant, but part of that included trying to create a little bit more opportunity for our guests to be outside. So the additional 461s per feet allows for that opportunity. And relaying out the restaurant, the net effect, though, was that we were going to reduce the total seating by two seats. We had a second agenda, and that was, it'd give us a little bit more visibility. People would actually recognize that we were a restaurant. At the planning commission, I was asked whether or not I was concerned about parking, and my response was that I was in the restaurant business, so I'm always concerned about parking. In fact, I wish that we had 200 parking places within 10 feet of our front door, pretty much like every other restaurant probably wants to have. The dilemma for me is that the only way you can do that is have a shopping center that's not very successful. And so at Corona Del Mar Plaza, we do have a shopping center that's successful, the retail tenants are successful, we're successful. I don't live in this community, I travel here quite a bit. I've never, ever not been able to find a parking space. My hometown happens to be Portland, Oregon, and it rains a lot there. So I have this propensity for wanting to be really close to the front door, but I've never, ever not found a parking place there. I've had to walk four or five rows. The good news is there's lots of sunshine here, so that's been an easy journey for me. So our approach has been to come to you and say that we'd really like for you to reconsider the additional square footage. We've agreed with the staff planning that we would never increase the seating capacity of our restaurant, so it's actually going to be two seats total less than it was prior. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you would have.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wish to comment on this? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the hearing and, do we ask someone else? Be quick there.
It'll be really quick.
No, just to get up.
It'll still be quick. I actually have looked this over, and one of my questions was answered, and that is that it's a net loss of two seats, which, by the way, I'm Dennis Baker, I live in Corona Del Mar on Begonia, basically across the street from the restaurant. And actually, I'm here to support this, because anything that takes even two seats away from any of the restaurants in that area is important to me, and I think is a plus. The one comment that you will probably not hear from me very often is I will compliment the planning commission, that doesn't happen too often, but in that there, in, on page five of the staff report, it does make a reference to the planning commission expressing concern about exacerbating an already bad parking situation, which we all know is existing in that area, and so this is the direction I'd like to see it go. Is there anybody knocked down? A couple seats here and a couple seats there, and we can remove some of those on-street parking. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close it and bring it back to council. It's in my district, so I guess I'll comment on it, that I think that the net reduction of two seats is a positive. Without this, they would still be able to go back and add the seats back on on the inside, so, and I think if the planning commission would have had that information, they probably would have approved this, this use permit, so I'd entertain a motion on the staff recommendation.
I'll move the action. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next item is public comments. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Good evening again. I'm here to talk to you about something other than Hoag Hospital.
Name again, please.
My name is Wendy Kaiser, and I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I'm also the first vice president of Seroptimists of Newport Harbor, which is a women's service organization that helps women and girls throughout our local community and globally. And I wanted to invite the council, as well as any of our public, to attend the Seroptimists Legislative Summit, which is also partnered with the Women's Foundation of California, the League of Women Voters, and others. It's going to be held at the Weston South Coast Plaza Hotel on Friday, May 30th. There will be an evening reception where you'll get to meet with women and people in politics, and then there's a workshop on Saturday, the 31st of May, where you can learn about how do you run for public office, for a PTA board or a city council, a senator position, a judge. They'll have active and retired senators, legislative city council members, mayors, different people from the community. And so for men and women, it would be a great time to come out and meet people and learn about that process, all people talking about campaign, how to build your platform, all the nuts and bolts. It's kind of a first time we've done this as a service organization. It should be pretty interesting. I'm looking forward to it. If you want information about it, you'd visit www.legislativesummit.org, and thank you for your time, and I hope to see some or all of you there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Barbara Roy, and I'm here to speak to, I live on the peninsula, 30 feet from a large rehab home with an occupancy of 49 patients and staff. I've wanted to compliment Mr. Hen. I was very pleased to hear some good news. I've been in this struggle since 1982, and so I look forward to more good news as we move forward and with enforcement of our ordinance and our use permit. I just would like to speak a little bit this evening about, I said, in spite of the current police report that burglaries are down in Newport, we on West Oceanfront have had a rough month. My neighbor two doors down has had his truck stolen right out of his garage. A half a block away, a resident heard an intruder in his home at 3:00 AM on Sunday. He held the suspect at bay with a hammer until police arrived and made the arrest. My brave neighbor is here this evening. A man is accused of lewd contacts throughout our neighborhood, and as I walked up Oceanfront to have dinner with my friends, a resident of a rehab home, sitting on the wall at 18:10, swore at me. I have owned my property since 1970, and I have never felt real concern for my personal safety until now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council, ladies and gentlemen, I am the victim of that break-in. It happened just a week ago.
Say your name, please.
Yes, Ron Herrick. I live at 1716 West Oceanfront. I think basically what we're all really very, very upset about with this, and I commend the city council for, you know, keeping after the action that we need to enforce this ordinance. We all have had at least two years, maybe longer, because Barbara's been down there for a long, long time. She just really contacted me recently. And I basically have to say that you, as the city council, need to do the things that you do to go after this situation very strongly, in keeping after the legal parameters, your guidelines that you have to deal with, to make a resolution for this, to make a situation better. We all know what we've put up with, with a couple of these rehab houses that have been very, very close to our homes, and I've been there for 12 years. And my wife and I were woken up at 3:00 in the morning a week ago Sunday, and this gentleman had broken into the house, which is under construction, some remodeling and a lot of reconstruction. And this gentleman informed me after I caught him hiding in my bathroom, and I held him for about five minutes until the police got there with a hammer, that he had done it before. And he was ID'd by the police as coming from one of the peninsula rehab homes. That was a quote by one of the officers that arrested it. The thing that bothers me is, he's done it before. But I was able to keep him from getting away. And I go on the 19th to his arraignment as a witness against him, and here at the Harbor Court, and I just can't emphasize enough that you really need to focus on this issue as it plays out, you know, legally in the courts, whatever the attorneys recommend that you do, because the situation is going to get to a point where it's going to get so out of control that you're not going to be able to really come back and pull it back without some kind of major action, and I don't know what that ultimately would or would not be, because it's getting out of control. And I just want to make that statement, and I hope that I never have to go through that again. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Don Chambers. I own and live on 31st Street on the peninsula. I had a very similar situation to what this gentleman had a year ago last Thanksgiving. My wife woke up about 2:00 in the morning, and we discovered somebody sleeping, sitting on our couch, and he was drunk, and I wasn't quite as brave as this gentleman. I didn't hold the guy down. We went in the bathroom, locked the door, and called the police. But anyway, I got a map the other day from the Concerned Citizens, and I was appalled at the number of what they call sober living houses or rehab houses surrounding 31st Street, from 28th down to 38th. It's just absolutely incredible how many there are, and, you know, I'm really getting, and we've got a few, we had a couple on 31st Street. I think they've left, but we've got some around the corner. Nevertheless, Councilman Hen, I want to, there's very good news you brought tonight. Can you just spend a minute or two and address the 20% that the judge set aside, and how is that going to be handled? These are the ones that are under license with the state that are six or under? Could you enlighten us a little bit on that?
In answer to your question, this was a tentative ruling that Councilmember Hen announced, and the way the court ruled tentatively, and he hasn't made a final decision, so it'd be a little difficult to predict how it's going to be handled until we get a final ruling from the judge, but the tentative ruling was that if they are licensed and they're six or under by the state, then they are treated by the state under the state legislation as a single housekeeping unit, as a regular residential use. And so the city's provisions that deals with integral facilities cannot be applied to those licensed uses. But those are the only ones in the tentative ruling so far that the judge has attributed that injunction to.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
I'm Tina Dineger. I live in Newport Beach, mayor, council. In the paper tonight, I guess you all read, that of Mr. Poland, who is representing one of the sober living home groups, I think they call themselves Pacific Shores, who came in and instituted two houses while you had the moratorium, and I guess he's being sued. But Mr. Poland, they've hired a, an attorney from Washington DC, and he calls residents here irrational. I guess I'm one of the irrational people here in Newport Beach that don't approve of him from... of him from Washington DC, looking at us and calling us irrational citizens, since we don't approve of some of their inactions, you know, breaking our laws, in other words. I thought that the moratorium was holding, and they came in under that moratorium. We also have another house on Seashore Drive that has come in and told you all that it was going to be a family home that they rented. It has now become a licensed facility. So, you know, these are sneaky people. They're not abiding by our laws at all. They're trying to circumvent it. I think what is irrational is allowing the proliferation of these drug and addicted alcohol-soaked rehab homes. The full extent of the problem of these facilities, I feel, is being kept from the citizens of Newport Beach. Because when we call about something that's happened, like a fighting in the streets and altercations, the police do not report it, because they call these people families. Now, I mean, the only family relation they have is their addiction. They're not related in any way, you know, like brothers or sisters or anything. It's not a family, but that is seen to be the, what is it, the denomination or something that they call themselves. I think, can't we in some way not call them a family, because that's not what they are? They are a rooming house with, you know, drug and alcohol people in them. And that way, we would get to know more about what is going on, because there are fights, there are, you know, drunken brawls, and we don't get to know it, because the police don't report it, because it's called a family. And that's, I feel that that's a wrong determination for them, because this is not what they are. They are problem homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council Mayor, my name is Daniel Weldon, a resident of Newport Beach. Mr. Hen, that was very good news of what you did announce, and quite different than how the newspaper prints it. Not here to go into, and a few of you have spoken with me in the past, but not here to go into what has happened in the past. Let's all move forward with what we can do about this with the rehab homes, whatever you do want to call them today. We've all chosen to live here for a variety of reasons, and I'm sure it wasn't to be next to a rehab business, which is what they are as a business. Let us get together and work things out and move towards the future for this city, not just for these businesses again. The key word is working together for the betterment of our whole community. Citizens, I believe, should have some oversight of what should be done with this ordinance and who will enforce it, rules, regulations, working to reduce the over-concentration. We know they are going to be here, just like we just spoke, 20%. We don't know exactly what that 20% means. There probably is going to end up being more than 20% of them here. And I think as citizens, we all accept that there's going to be some here in our city, but not the concentration that we've allowed to be right in this area of the city. Having a tough enforcement on all types of illegal businesses, this is a business. There must be rules, guidelines. Give it a hard look and just demand what's good for this city. I thank all of you.
Thank you. Okay, Dick, remember to watch that blue box.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. I'd like to just remind a few comments on integral homes. Multiple six and unders working together is an integral home. So if we have six and unders in A and B and C, and they all go to the same place for their program, or they use the same facilities for the program, or they're owned by the same owner, that's multiple facility, that's an integral home. And we need to be able to trace that, so we need to know where these guys are sleeping, as well as where they're being, have their services, where they receive their services, their eating, and their schooling. Also, the ownership, again, I want to just emphasize that one more time, and that is, it says that if I'm a rent, if I rent houses to different integral facilities, I mean, to different facilities, and each of those claims to be a six and under, and I'm the same renter, I rent to each of those, now that's an integral home. And that's all it has to be, is just the same guy renting, the same basement. So we need to really trace these, because I was seeing a telephone report, for example, and the telephone report was pointing how they had tied together the telephone services of all these facilities, and how much better it was now, because they could move people from one facility to another and thereby trace their telephone service so they would be charged properly. This kind of thing indicates that's integral facilities, not, not single standalone. And so, we need to, we need to do that, and if we do that, I think we can stop this. Thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Good job there.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members. Thank you for hearing us. Denise Oberman, resident of this city. I congratulate the council, and I did attend with some other citizens, as well as the Concerned Citizens Legal Counsel, Michael Titus. We attended the hearing, and I do want you to know that the people at Markman and Pierce did an excellent job. Having said that, we would like to request and really implore that you vigorously assert and defend this issue of integral uses and integral facilities, because there is plenty, there is documentation, first of all, in the statute, which clearly allows there to be such consideration, and it doesn't even need a lot of interpretation. It was pretty clear at the hearing that the judge and his support people had not carefully studied that issue, and also that the city had probably not presented sufficient factual documentation to show the significance of the integral facilities here. We do know that all of our largest major operators will continue in this city unless we do assert and defend vigorously this notion of integral facilities really being one business under one ownership with shared services, and they need to be managed accordingly. And we ask that you do so. We know that there are a number of other cities in California that will join you in fighting this, that will also vigorously support us, that are contending with the same thing. Thank you very much.
Just a couple of quick comments. My name is Dolores Otting. I want to thank Councilmember Hen this afternoon for pushing the emergency, the emergency warning system, and also to tell the public, if they already don't know, that on May 22nd, the emergency warning system will be tested. So that's probably 11 years in the works, and I want to thank you all for doing that. Some things take a really long time. And that's on May 22nd. And also on May 22nd, the Newport Harbor Republican Women's Group, that I'm the president of, at Five Crowns at 11:30, is going to be having the Howard Jarvis people come and talk on Proposition 98 and 99. So any of you out there, if you want to attend, please don't hesitate to call. My number is listed. And then lastly, something that I have always wanted to mention but never did, my good friend, Tom Hines, and I used to enjoy many, many, many city council meetings together here in the audience, and, you know, like Attorney Clausen can attest to that. And one of the things that, Tom lives a little bit further down the street from Narcanon, and as Barbara said, they've been there since 1982. And the more, the night before he had his stroke, he also got burglarized. And during that time, there was a lot of those types of things happening. So everyone here in the audience, they're all well, thank God, and healthy, but I still, in my heart, believe that part of what happened to Tom is because his house, because he was attacked that night in his house. And, I mean, they were burglarized, and it was just too much. And so, you really need to step up all types of enforcement, because there are consequences to people breaking into your house. It's nice that somebody can have a hammer, and it's nice that someone else can lock themselves into a bathroom, but the fact that they're not being recorded as such isn't really the right avenue to take. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, Willis Longyear. I live in Newport Beach. I'm here to express concern for the Concerned Citizens. It seems like over the last year or so that I've been involved in this activity, that there's been what appears to be an adversarial relationship between the citizens who elect you and the council result and consideration of the operators and what we consider oversensitivity to state requirements and so forth. Other cities seem to be able to write, write legislation which bans further permission for group homes in their city at all, because they feel that they have too many. I haven't heard that kind of talk here at all. It just, it seems to me, and we run into problems where I hear of the story of a young lady who was running around the street at night, out of her mind, she didn't have any clothes on, she was trying to get into people's houses, she got in somebody's house, locked herself in the bedroom, and trashed the place. And when they took her out eventually, the police talked the guy out of filing a report so it wouldn't show up on our DACA. It seems to me, I hope, the city's going to take a very strong stand against the proliferation of group homes in town, to toughen the line on enforcement, to reduce and disperse the number of units in town, to keep them away from use areas, schools, nurseries, and parks, and so forth, to make sure that everybody who should be licensed is licensed, and to, in general, work towards reduction of this problem in town. There have to be group homes, but they don't have to be next door to each other, hundreds of them in our little tiny neighborhood. So when we look at our elected officials, we look for them to protect us. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Werner Escher, representing my family, Diane Escher. Having lived at 205 40th Street for 43 years, I want to commend the action of the city, and certainly in its efforts not only to protect the members of the community, but I think we have also an obligation to protect the fact that, I read in the Daily Pilot, that Newport Beach was a resort, and that as a resort, we were the most, what, eighth? Most popular resort in the state of California? So I think there's an obligation to protect that, certainly reputation of being a resort, and not let the proliferation or the institutionalization of sober living and other, and the rehab homes in any way disdain or misidentify that reputation that we have enjoyed as being a resort. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Abraham. I live at 908 West Bay Avenue. I have been interested in this for a long time. I'm not affected at the moment, but there was a group home near my home, the alley that's right across from my home. And, you know, we all work really hard for our homes. We've worked all of our lives. We're entitled to privacy. And there was a group home, and there was trash that was piled into the alley that you wouldn't believe. Trash Day is Monday, and by Tuesday, there was trash and furniture and whatever piled in the alley. Also, on Mondays and Tuesdays, we have to find a place to park our cars. And there were a number of cars on 9th Street. Most of them had out-of-state license plates. So I presumed that they were part of the group home people. It made it very difficult for the homeowners to park. Another thing was, I walk my dog every day over on the Oceanfront, and I would walk across Talboah Boulevard, and every morning, there was someone on a motorcycle that went zipping around, parked in front of the home, and walked in. Well, I don't know where that person was all night, but, but I would not presume that someone living there would be able to have a motorcycle. And then, topping the icing on the cake was, my husband and I were at the coffee shop, and this fellow walked up to us and asked us for money. And my husband gave him money, which was against my principle. And then the fellow went skipping down the street like, "Oh, yay, I scored." And a second time, my husband was in the garage that we rent that's on the alley, and a girl stopped and asked him for money, walked into the garage, asked him for money, and he gave it to her. And then she walked right into the group home. So, you know, these are things that I don't think that the residents should have to put up with. We're very generous during the summer to put up with a lot of people, but when it's all year round, it gets very, very old. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close that part of our agenda. Move on to current business, item number 26, the cost recovery ordinance. Mr. City Manager?
Glenn Everode is going to walk us through this agenda item. Mr. Mayor?
I thought they were all waiting for me. I'm so disappointed.
If everyone could please exit quietly, we would appreciate it. We have other business to conduct here.
On our star one.
Got to enter the password.
Let me know when you want me to kill the lights, sir.
I think we're there. Thank you, councilman. Mayor, council members, Glenn Everode, revenue manager. We're here this evening to talk about the cost of services study and the next step As councils well aware, one of the priorities council chose last year was to develop a process to regularly review and update the city's fees in order to ensure most fees services pay for themselves. In the process, we contracted with a firm, public resources management, to conduct a cost of services study. That cost of services study was presented to the finance committee in draft form in August, and February of this year, and April of this year as well. Finance committee directed us to collect stakeholder input on the cost of services study, and discuss with stakeholders, including staff, recommendations about the implementation of the study itself, and what percentage of this cost should be borne by the applicant for the service. The dates and the organizations reflected on this slide are those stakeholders that we communicated with in the process of collecting stakeholders' information about how this should be implemented. Last council meeting, April 22nd, we presented at a study session the cost of services study, and consultants were available for questions that evening. The cost of services study identified what the cost for providing a service by the city was for thirty-three million dollars in service-related costs. Those, the last cost of services study was conducted in 1996. It's been quite some time since we've updated that study. The consultants identified that about twelve million dollars of that thirty-three million dollars is being recovered in current fees. Their recommendation, and that constitutes about a thirty-five percent cost recovery, their recommendation was that we should increase our cost recovery to about fifty-two percent, and that would generate another five point six million dollars in revenues. In the process of their recommendation, their identification of the cost of services study, their identification of the costs and the percentage of recovery, we identified that there were a number of fees, two-hundred-and-seventy-one different services for which fees are imposed, that we need to increase the fee to recover our cost. There was also sixty-two areas, sixty-two service areas where we're collecting more than what it costs us to provide the service. The consultants also identified twenty-three areas of service where we did not have a fee, and they made a recommendation that we impose a fee in these twenty-three areas. And there are forty-four areas as subsidized services based on the proposed percentage of recovery. And that's really why we're here this evening, is to discuss the cost recovery ordinance, Chapter 3.36. The recommendation before you this evening is to amend Chapter 3.36, to do a couple of things. Increase the frequency of studies to about every five years. What we did hear from stakeholders universally was that this is too long, twelve years is too long to conduct this study, and we need to be doing this much more frequently. So what 3.36 does is, it establishes the percentage of recovery by ordinance. And then, subsequent to that, we will bring to council a resolution that applies the percentage of recovery to the costs that the consultants identified, and in that resolution, we'll establish the master fee schedule for the city. Chapter 3.36 also provides that we can change the resolution without amending the ordinance, and it also establishes late fees in the Chapter 3.36. I was asked this evening to provide a listing of the services that are currently listed in the ordinance, Chapter 3.36. Those items are on the left-hand side of the screen. The old column that's referenced there identifies the percentage of recovery currently established by ordinance. The new is how that, those particular service areas currently listed in Chapter 3.36 will be affected by the proposal that you have before you this evening. Chapter 3.36 has historically identified all the service areas for which fees were imposed, and related in that hundred-and-forty-two service areas, the specific percentage of recovery. What we're proposing in the new version of Chapter 3.36 is to set the cost recovery at a hundred percent, and we were directed by Finance Committee to identify, just in the 3.36 ordinance, those service areas for which we want to recover something less than a hundred percent of the cost. So with that, I'll be happy to go through each of these slides and identify these areas where we're changing the percentage of recovery. On this screen, under building, we've got permits, the plan check fees for grading are going from seventy-one percent cost recovery to a hundred percent, preliminary plan reviews, microfilming, as you can see in blue. Those are the areas where there's some change between the old and the new. Development review fees, we're going to be removing, these are, these are not char fees that we have currently, have historically imposed, and I'm not really sure why this was included in the 1996 version of this ordinance. Residential building records are going from seventy-nine percent to a hundred percent. Appeals to City Council and Planning Commission in the planning areas are maintained at fifty percent. A hundred percent recovery before and after this ordinance for these areas in planning. More planning fees, staying at a hundred percent cost recovery. These two are planning fees, staying at a hundred percent cost recovery. When we get into the area of recreation and senior services, we began to identify most of the areas where there is some form of subsidy by the city. Volleyball program going from eighty-five to sixty percent. Tennis round robin is going to be removed, the service no longer provided in the recreation area. Facility and field rentals going from eighty-five to ninety-five percent. Aquatics, there are a number of different charges in the aquatics category that range from eight percent to fifty percent of proposed recovery. Historically, those were set at eighty-five percent. In terms of the cost recovery, that's going to be reduced to eight to fifty percent. Youth sports, football, going from eighty-five to fifty percent. And you can see how, in these various areas of recreation, they've mostly dropped from what was in the prior ordinance to this ordinance, with the exception of some of the special event categories where they're being ratcheted to a hundred percent recovery. Recreation, senior services, transportation costs going from thirty to three percent of cost recovery. You can see recreation classes going down from eighty-five to eleven percent. A number of areas where it was in the ordinance proposed, and a zero percent recovery, we're just going to remove those altogether. There are no charges associated with those. Library services, we were at a hundred percent cost recovery proposed under the old ordinance. We're going to five percent recovery there. You can see for rentals, books on cassette, et cetera, those are being reduced. Juryed art shows are being removed, no longer charged, services for which fees are imposed. And the fire marine category, emergency operation services specifically, we've got our EMS costs, charges that are going up a percentage point here under advanced life support, and basic life support, from sixty-five to seventy-five percent of cost recovery. Into some building fees at a hundred percent, or these are actually harbor resources charges, general fund-supported construction plans, fire inspection services, all at a hundred percent. Special hazardous tank removal from fifty-one to percent, to a hundred percent cost recovery. Special hazards, piping, tents, canopies. Safety inspection complaints, there's never been a charge for that, we're removing that one. Marine preserve is staying at fifteen percent cost recovery. We're removing the recycling program, that's a recycle surcharge that's imposed on our residential customers. Right-of-way requests, we don't char out of general services for that any longer. Traffic signs, that's being removed altogether, there's no longer a charge for that, it's time and material cost recovery. Police department charges, there are a number of areas in the police department specifically that the cost recovery is set by state or federal laws. So the area there, civil subpoena, those are set by state law. So our concealed weapon permit, applications renewals, environmental services billings, those are a time and materials charge currently. Bike licenses, we're keeping those at seventeen percent. Fingerprint, it's just a state charge, so it's a pass-through by the city, we're removing that one. Same with arrests, crime, traffic collision reports, these are all Public Records Act predicated charges. We don't have the opportunity to recover costs in those areas, photographs, videos, audios, Polaroids, all again, Public Records Act cost recovery. Emergency response billings, those are set by state law. There's a maximum amount that can be charged by state law, domestic violence reports, missing person reports, both Public Records Act, and traffic collisions, also Public Records Act dictated, we're removing those from the schedule. Public Works has a number of fees for which we impose, a number of services for which fees are imposed, and those percentages are remaining the same. The only one, we're grading plan reviews, and these pre-permit reviews, landscape plan reviews, are all items that are associated with planning and building charges currently, so our costs have been factored into that. We're going to remove it from the Public Works category. Revenue, I've never understood why we had animal traps in our list, but maybe a new assignment I've yet to take on. There's no charge for that currently. Dog licensing, we're going to recover our costs from those animals that are not sterilized. If you've got a spayed or neutered pet, we'll be recovering fifty percent of our costs. Animal bite reports, again, Public Records Act dictated. And towing permits, this, back in 1996, when this was done, the city was in the business of regulating tow trucks. We no longer, the states preempted our ability to do that. Hundred percent recovery in these other kinds of permits, adult-oriented business, escort services, live entertainment, et cetera. Marine charter permits are now administered by Harbor Resources, not a part of the Revenue Division's responsibilities. And that's the schedule of charges that currently exist in 3.36. When we went to stakeholders with the study, what stakeholders were able to work with was the current cost, the current percentage of recovery that we're realizing from the fee that's imposed by that cost, and a recommendation in terms of what percentage of cost should be recovered for that service, and what the resulting fee would be if we adopted the ordinance as it's presented to you this evening. The process from here is that we would bring back to council, after the introduction of Chapter 3.36, a resolution establishing the master fee schedule. It could be adopted that evening. We'd have some noticing requirements for development-related fees, that we'd have sixty days to wait before we could impose. And then from that point, we would be able to, once the ordinance was effective, thirty days after the second reading, we would be able to implement the changes that are in the master fee schedule. Thereafter, we'll be looking to come back to, go back to staff with any changes that they have to the services that are provided for those services that were studied by the consultant, and make adjustments upwards, downwards, based on any change in cost that we may have associated with these fees that are in the master fee schedule. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Councilman Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glenn, I compliment you on the report. I think it's an excellent report. I probably agree with most of it. My concern is that we're establishing these formulas for fees without knowing precisely what they do in terms of the fees that they would generate. And then we're going to be asked to approve a fee schedule consistent with the ordinance that we had previously adopted. Now, I know we provided the consultant's report here, it's not clear whether that constitutes the recommended fee schedule that I asked the city manager to review and comment and rationalize in terms of recommendations. But I believe we would be better served, and the transparency of the process would be better served, if we were to adopt this ordinance with the fee structure on the same agenda, so we can see how these formulas translate to into actual fees. As I said, when we had the study session on the fee study, what I would like to see is the city manager and staff take a look at those recommended fees from the consultant and pass them through a rationality test, to make sure that the cumulative effect of those fees on a particular service are not out of line, to make sure that the rate of increases or percentage of recovery simply makes rational sense in terms of the absolute dollar amount of fee that's being assessed, to look at a phasing schedule to the extent that we have substantial increases in fees. And I also think it's important that these fees be looked at in the context of, as your slide showed, that we're also reducing a lot of fees. And so we need to make sure that the net impact of those reductions are both noted and included in the actions that we take. So, Mr. Mayor, my recommendation would be that we table this until we can consider it in the context of also having the fee structure with us. I would so move.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any council discussion on that, this point?
I just had, I wanted to be sure, Glenn. Somehow I had the impression from before that when you did your stakeholder discussions, you did show them the resulting new fee that combined both the percentage recovery and the cost recovery study.
Councilman Haddan, Curry, since August, the meeting that we had with the Finance Committee in August, what we've been providing to Finance Committee at each of the meetings that we've had, and to each of the stakeholders, from which the August Finance Committee direction was to seek that stakeholder input, the stakeholders were all provided these documents that Finance Committee reviewed in August, where the service type, the name of the service, description of the service, the annual volume, the current fee, the percentage of the full cost, the current subsidy amount, the proposed cost recovery level, and what the fee would be at the proposed cost recovery level, as well as any subsidy amount at the proposed cost recovery level. This sheet was available for each of the services that the consultant studied, and we've had this since August to work with, both at Finance Committee and with each of the stakeholders' meetings. And so with each iteration that we brought back to Finance Committee, we've been working with this document in both the percentage of recovery and how that should be implemented. Should we be seeking a hundred percent recovery in the first year, or should we be phasing this in? In the case of some of the recreation charges, we thought it best, because of the significance in the change, that we implement that over a period of time. And so some of the recreation services, the fees will be phased in over a three, four-year period. But it is, it has been, since August, available to each of the stakeholders, including staff. This has been a working document that we've come back and forth with Finance Committee on, to identify the, what the fee would be if the policy levels that we're speaking about this evening were implemented, and what the charge would be for that specific service.
But implementing the new policy level times the newly determined cost of service to get the new end fee.
That's correct. That's correct. We start off with what the current fee is, and then what the cost is. And from that cost, we identify what percentage we want to recover, and that provides us what the proposed fee will be that we'll see in the resolution we bring to council subsequent to tonight.
Councilman Rosansky? Okay. Any other comments from council?
I have a question.
Yes.
Glenn, was it your intention, then, that after the introduction of this ordinance, if the council introduces it tonight, that when they adopt the ordinance, the resolution will be adopted at the same time?
Thank you. Apparently it wasn't clear in what the next steps would be for this. Yes, there'd be a second reading of this ordinance in two weeks, and it is that, it would be at second reading of that ordinance that we would be introducing the resolution establishing the master fee schedule. So it would be at that evening's event that we adopt, or we do, take the So, it would be at that evening's event that we adopt, or that we do, take the second reading of the ordinance and adopt the master fee schedule through that resolution.
As I understand, second reading though, there's not a lot of wiggle room.
I don't think, I think council has the election, I'm sure the city can weigh in not to pass the ordinance on that evening if there's a problem with any specific area of the ordinance itself.
And then you'd have to go back to round one, right?
Instead of adopting it, you would have to reintroduce it with the changes.
Right, and then go to round two. Okay.
Why wouldn't you have just brought the resolution to us tonight, since all this work has been done? I do remember seeing all this, why wouldn't you have brought the resolution concurrent with the ordinance?
Well, if council elected to change any of the specific percentages of recovery, it has a direct effect on the fee that'll be set in the resolution. So, if for whatever reason council elected to change a percentage of recovery in the cost of services ordinance, it impacts what the charge would be in the master fee schedule.
Yeah, but is not the obverse true, that if you wanted to change the fee, then you have to go back and change the ordinance?
And I think, in order to kind of back up Glenn here, I think staff felt like our direction from the Finance Committee was to come with the percentages first, that it was basically a policy decision, and then the charges would flow from that. But what would be the effect if council doesn't take any action tonight, and we bring back then the resolution along with the first reading of the ordinance? I mean, when would the resolution take effect then? Would it be upon the final adoption of the ordinance?
Right. The resolution would come back when you introduce the ordinance, and if you wanted to adopt the resolution at that time, then the resolution would provide that it becomes effective when the ordinance becomes effective, which would be 30 days after its adoption. So, that would probably be another reason why I think Glenn thought that, in addition to the other response that Homer gave, that Glenn would have thought that the resolution wouldn't need to be adopted till the adoption, be approved until the adoption, because it becomes effective immediately.
I have a question. So, really, the fees you're talking about are the fees that are in the report here. It's really, the only thing that's going to change is how we, whether the fee is just all one lump sum, or we're going to phase it in, is that what you're going to come back with?
Councilman Rosansky, what tonight's action does is establish what the percentage of recovery shall be. There's only a handful of services that would be in the proposed ordinance that we were speaking of this evening. The fee schedule has over 1,000 different services for which fees are imposed, and you'll be looking at every single fee that the city will be implementing with that resolution on that evening. So, we're not asking you to look at the thousands of fees, we're only asking you to look at the percentage of recovery for those fees that are in, that are not going to be funded at 100%.
That's right Glenn, I mean, that is an important point, because Exhibit A shows two pages of fees that are less than 100%. What it doesn't show is everything else is at 100%.
What the ordinance speaks to in one of the sections that precedes the exhibit is that unless the service is listed with a percentage of recovery in the exhibit to 3.36, that service will be at 100% recovery.
And does that include those services that we're currently not recovering 100%?
Correct.
So, what we're doing is, we're backing into a wholesale increase of fees. And in fact, we're going to probably end up doing that, but we're doing it in a blind way that I'm very uncomfortable with. I think that needs to be laid out in a transparent way, so we see what those fees are, what the impact of passing this ordinance is going to be in terms of dollars and cents to the consumers of our city's services.
But isn't that what this document shows us here?
Yeah, last, at the study session, that document, the cost of services study, lists for every service that was studied, what the fee will be, given the proposed percentage of increase that we're addressing tonight.
Right, whether it's 100% or 80%.
That's correct, and the percentage of recovery is listed for each of those services in that study.
Right, so we have all that information that he's asking for in this document, except that it doesn't say whether we're going to phase it in, or those types of things.
That's correct, yes.
And that's the point I was trying to get.
That document has the percentage of recovery that we're proposing tonight, and if we adopt that percentage of recovery, what the resultant fee would be for each of the services.
Right, so we have the current fee here, what we're charging today, and we have what it will result at the level, at the percentage that we're talking about. So, we know how much is going to go up based upon this document. We just don't know maybe how quickly.
Quickly will be the issue, I mean, after council's adopted, we still have implementation with staff, and some of those, particularly in the development services area, we've got a 60-day notice period before we can, even after council's adopted, implement those fees, so.
Well, no, what I say by implementation, like, let's say we're going to phase in one fee over three years.
Right.
We're going to go from 25% recovery to 100%, 25% a year, let's say.
Yes.
So, we don't know that based upon this document.
I can identify the specific fees, there were just a handful of them that were in that category, less than six.
Oh.
That were in that category, not a significant number.
Okay.
And they were all recreation-related.
What we didn't do with this agenda item is include that list so that you could see. I mean, you saw it prior, but it wasn't included.
Well, my question is, was this complete list made available to the public prior to this meeting?
It's been.
Is this complete list available to the public, and has it been available to be reviewed?
We had a draft report in August that Finance Committee reviewed, and then again in February, Finance Committee reviewed the draft report. In February, after the Finance Committee meeting, we put it on the city's website, and did a news alert through the website of the posting on the website. In April, the study was updated after stakeholder input, and that updated study was put on the website, and also reviewed by the Finance Committee.
But was this particular thing distributed with the agenda item for this meeting?
Was this distributed by Friday, I guess is what he's asking.
No, this was not distributed. This was introduced, this was presented at the study session, and distributed at the study session last session.
Well, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, what I asked at the study session was that the city manager review these recommendations in the consultant's report, and I wanted a report from the city manager that says either, these are the fees that we're going to raise, these are the fees we're going to lower, and these are the changes that I would make because when you put them all together on a piece of page, they either don't, piece of paper, they either make sense or don't make sense. And this is the phasing schedule that we're going to do. Now, what I think I'm hearing is that it's staff's view that you're just going to recommend the entire consultant report as it is, or as it's been revised, and maybe that's okay too. But that's not the direction that we gave at the study session.
Staff did get together and review what the percentages were, and Glenn, the one that I recall in particular was, I think, the preliminary plan review.
In building, yes.
I think that was recommended at 100%, and I did not feel comfortable with that, so took it down to 75% for that particular one, just because of issues that we're having there, and because of the discussion council previously had about whether people are feeling like they get value for that. And I didn't think it was right to take that to 100%, but we did review those recreation fees, and the incremental increase in that, and also I heard from Glenn about the contact that he's had with the stakeholders, and in particular, the building industry, and I thought the report was positive in terms of those contacts and those responses.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn. Okay, I'll open this to the public for comment. Anybody wish to comment on this?
Good evening, my name is Laura Curran, I live in Corona del Mar. I would like to commend the council for asking for more clarification on these, on this item. I have a lot of sympathy for Mr. Everoe, because these types of tasks are thankless, and it's a lot of work, so. You're on the path, you're making progress. But at the same time, when I look at the report, I had a couple of questions. For example, if I understand the report correctly, we're looking at a reduction in recovery cost on items such as aquatics and volleyball, senior transportation. But what I don't have is context, and for example, with those rates, will we be above or below the market? How will be, how will the city of Newport Beach be priced compared to alternatives? For example, businesses providing those services, or neighboring services? And how would changing those fees impact services? So, for example, if you lower senior citizen transportation cost, if I understood that correctly, will your demand go up to the extent that you might not be able to service all the people who want to use the service? So, you'll need another van. I mean, those would be questions that would be worth having in terms of understanding the direction we're looking at. And finally, on the recreation, I would like to understand, are we going to offer the same fee recovery percentage to residents as well as to non-residents? You know, we have incurred, we incur costs for these programs, and our residents should be getting the greater benefit if we are offering a subsidy. So, I think the council is asking for more context, and I would second that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dale.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to address that question about the recreation fees, because I asked it myself. And that is, you know, Newport Beach, we provide recreation services to a lot of people, both our residents and out of town. And the way that the fee is structured is that there would be 100% fee recovery from outside, if you don't live in Newport Beach, but according to the law, those from outside Newport Beach cannot subsidize the lower fee that we get for Newport Beach. Hopefully that makes sense to you.
Okay. Anyone else want to address the council on this issue? Okay, saying none, I'll bring it back. Is there any further discussion on Councilmember Curry's motion? Okay, saying none, please vote.
The motion carries.
Okay.
Did you get a comment?
No, Dick, public comment's over on this item. Sorry, you missed it. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the item number 27, vendor selection for contract negotiations for residential solid waste transfer services and materials processing. Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mark Harmon, Director of General Services. For the past 12 years, the city has had a contract with CRNR to provide the processing and removal of recyclable materials from the city's residential waste stream. The current contract requires CRNR to recycle a minimum of 25% of the materials delivered by the city. Currently, city employees transfer the collected materials from the city yard to the CRNR processing facility located in the city of Stanton. This requires two full-time employees, four transfer trailers, and three truck tractors to accomplish this task. On January 22nd, city council extended the contract term with CNR, with CRNR, excuse me, to June 30th, 2008, with the understanding that staff would seek proposals from solid waste companies to provide the transportation function in addition to the processing of the materials. This would require the contractor to truck the loaded containers from the city yard to their facility for processing. In addition to this change, the city also increased the minimum recycling level from 25% to 40%. This will result in recycling an additional 8,000 tons per year of materials from the city's waste stream. On April 11th, a copy of the city's RFP was mailed to each of the city's franchised haulers. The city received proposals from three companies, Waste Management of Orange County, Rainbow Disposal, and CRNR Incorporated. During the analysis of the proposals, staff realized that the RFP document did not clearly indicate what tonnage level per truckload would be used for calculating the overall tonnage cost. Staff also realized that the use of different tonnage levels between haulers' bids could result in a different low bid determination. To ensure a fair bid process, and working with the city attorney's office, staff re-released the transportation or transfer part of the bid with a fixed tonnage load of 21.14 tons per truck. This allowed each bidder to change their transportation cost and submit this part of their proposals, and resubmit this part. Both CRNR and Rainbow Disposal took advantage of this opportunity, CRNR lowering their bid for transportation by 67%, and Rainbow lowering their bid by 51%. The results of the bid process are found on page four of your agenda report. The low bid from CRNR will result in cost savings of approximately $600,000 per year. There will also be significant one-time savings, including $340,000 currently in the equipment replacement reserve funds for the future purchase of transfer equipment, and also the funds that will be received for selling the city's existing fleet of transfer equipment. The two employees that are currently operating the transfer trucks will be moved to equal positions within the department that are currently budgeted and vacant. The cost savings involved with this project will not result in any lost jobs for city employees. Finally, each council member should have received a letter today from Rainbow Disposal, a copy of a letter, from Rainbow Disposal outlining their concerns with the process and the proposal from CRNR. The city attorney's office has reviewed this letter, and Aaron Harp can answer any questions related to that issue. Conclude staff report, and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Harmon, before you ask any questions, that band-aid didn't come from mediating the difference between Rainbow and CRNR, did it?
No, I think it's from pounding my head against the wall on these trash contracts. No, it's just a little too much sun, I think, is, you know, I finally get a job working at the beach, and the doctor tells me no more sun, so.
Councilman Gardner.
Yes, a question, I think you said that both Rainbow and C-N-R, C-NRR? CRNR?
Yeah, I have trouble with CRNR.
Both lowered their prices, not just the one.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Harmon? Okay, thank you. I'll open it for public comment.
I have to take my glasses off, I can't read my notes. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bruce Schuman, I'm co-president and CEO of Rainbow Disposal. Excuse me. As Mr. Harmon said, Rainbow is one of the bidders on this solid waste transfer and processing contract you're considering this evening. What you have before you appears on its face to be a very competitive bid from CRNR. However, when you peel back the bid numbers and examine the circumstances surrounding this procurement process, it doesn't support the staff's recommendation. Rainbow's original bid on this contract was competitive and fair. It was also the lowest bid, and was published as such by staff. Also, it was the lowest bid at the 21.14 tons, that was in the recent bid. Staff should have recommended Rainbow as the lowest responsible bidder. It was at this point that the bidding process became convoluted, involving a city consultant who was acting outside the scope of his authority. This consultant, incidentally, had previously been under the employment of CRNR. Here are a few facts of this procurement. City staff conducted an analysis of the bids that showed that Rainbow has the lowest bidder overall. This analysis was then sent to each of the bidders by the General Services Director. The city consultant intervened at this point in the process without the authorization from the General Services Director. In fact, the consultant stated that he was intervening on behalf of Mr. Harmon, who was out of town. The consultant then requested the bidders to explain how their transportation rates were calculated. Mr. Harmon was not out of town. In fact, he called me within a half hour after that conversation with the consultant, even after consultant had said Mr. Harmon was out of town, and he was intervening on his behalf. Due to the consultant's unauthorized actions, the General Services Director requested that the transportation portion, and again, Mr. Harmon said, the transportation portion be rebid. The rebid specifically stated that the processing portion was already accepted by the city, and those numbers were not to be changed. With the details of the bids now known by all parties, CRNR came in with a negative bid on the transportation portion, in essence, paying the city to haul the material. This, when you've locked off the processing portion, this, as we believe, and as it stated in our letter to the city, constitutes a potential unfair business practice under California Business and Practices Code. We submitted that letter, and that letter was researched by our attorney, who is here this evening, Mr. Bruce Atwell, who can answer any questions. The staff report also stated that CRNR reduced its bid by 67% on the transportation portion. Well, my math, when you go from $65 to a negative 93 something, is 244% reduction, not 67% reduction. The city's acceptance of CRNR's potentially illegal bid is essentially a re-characterization of the bid specification to be an all-in specification, not just a transportation element and then a processing element. The city had locked off the processing element, and was only seeking to clarify the transportation element. But by accepting a negative number on transport, which is impossible, it does cost you money to come and pick up the material and transport it, is you're in essence changing the processing portion, which the rebid specifically said you're not to change, the processing portion. Just knowing these facts should really result, should the council should ask some very strong questions as to why the bid analysis is being changed, the specification is being changed to accommodate what is potentially an illegal bid under the California Practices Code, especially since this bid process was already compromised by the consultant in the first place. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Schuman? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. There are really three...
Name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bruce Atwell, counsel for Rainbow Disposal. There are really three principal issues that are raised by the present circumstance. The first is whether or not the bid submission process complies with the state public contract law. And the bid was initially put out pursuant to the City of Newport Beach Charter, Section 1110, Contracts on Public Works, which is substantially the same as a boiled-down version of the state public contract law. Basically, what it says is that any contract exceeding $30,000 shall be let by the city council by contract to the lowest responsible bidder. And in this particular case, Rainbow Disposal was the lowest responsible bidder. At the time the contract, the bids were opened, Rainbow had the lowest bid. As a result, Rainbow should be awarded the entire contract. And that's pursuant not only to city code, Section 1110, but also to the California Public Contract Code. The bid clarification didn't comply with the requirements of your own city charter in that it didn't give the minimum 10-day opportunity for publication and open bidding by the public under a sealed bid. So, it was really almost, it undermined the fairness that's built into the public contract bidding system and really cast a shadow on the entire bidding process in this particular instance. Additionally, the bid that CRNR produced, part of the clarified bid that they did with the mileage, is a violation of Business and Professions Code, Section 17,000 at SEC, and specifically, Section 17049, which says that no contractor, system of contracts can allow for anybody selling goods or services to sell them under the cost of those goods and services as a de facto violation of the fair, free enterprise system. Matter of fact, the United States has had a number of cases against foreign entities that have dumped different items into the country under cost to protect the business and the fair operation of business within the United States. If the bid were reassessed and given to CRNR under the present circumstances, it would be anti-competitive, and in fact, it would make the City of Newport Beach complicit in that anti-competitive activity. There are two principal remedies that the city is empowered to employ. The first, and both of these are under your city charter. The first is that Rainbow can be declared the lowest bidder under the original bid, and the irregularities caused by the resubmission would just simply wash out. Of course, at that point, the city would have the opportunity to negotiate with Rainbow regarding any price adjustments. And I can't personally speak to the pricing issues, but it is my understanding from talking with various people within the company that there are some things that were not included in the bid which could have an effect of lowering the price, including the cost of transportation. The second alternative is that all bids would be rejected by the board and that the RFP would be republished and put out for public bid, and either of those solutions would comply with your city charter. However, of course, Rainbow believes that the best solution would be to take the initial bid as it was and negotiate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Hi, my name is Dolores Oding. I live in Newport Beach. Don't you just love trash? That's why when you do a trash bid, you do a bid, okay? You don't open it up and show everybody what it is and then do it again, okay? Because it's not fair to the people that spend their lives doing this work to get these contracts. First of all, I don't really think it needs to be a 10-year contract to begin with, okay? As you can see from page 5 of the estimated annual cost contract, we're currently paying $1.8 million. The recycling rate is only 20%, and I don't know how in God's name they were able to do that in this city, okay? To keep that at 20% in the year 2008. And if you notice, what will happen if you go forward with this, it's 1.2 million, so you've saved $600,000 in a couple of weeks. So, again, if you have a five-year agreement, and I think you owe it to your residents who pick up these, you know, who pay these bills, that every five years, somebody has to sharpen their pencil in order to do business because it's not like they have to buy new equipment to do this job, it's not like they don't know what they're doing. Secondly, when you go down to the bottom of page 5, it says optional service information, and this gets very interesting. It says both CRNR Incorporated and Rainbow Disposal included optional services as part of their proposals. And again, the word bid and proposal is interchanged in this document, which I always hated when I had to fill these things out, okay? Because it's either a bid or a proposal, and they're two different things, and you have to state exactly what they are, and that, again, makes it more crazy for everybody. Optional services included such items as the purchase of the city's existing fleet of transfer equipment, the use of the contractor's natural gas fueling facility, which I guess would be for our trucks, electronic waste collection, transfer of C and D materials, which is construction and demolition materials from the city yard, and utilizing the excess capacity in the city's transfer station, which is worth something. All these things are worth something. And it says, although not requested as part of the RFP process, council may direct staff to include discussion of these service enhancements as part of the contract negotiation process. Well, if you're gonna put it out twice and take off all your clothes and then include this also, I don't understand what's going on. I'm just like totally, really confused. And I also think if you're gonna put it out to bid again, you need to add a green waste component to the city's trash service, to what they're going to collect, okay? Green waste is 17 to 51% of your load. We have lots of gardeners, we should have a place where they can dump clean green waste and be part of this whole process. We don't do clean newspapers, we don't do clean cardboard, but we could do clean green waste, or some green waste, because that can be composted and that can be reused. And I'm hoping, Councilmember Hen, that you agree with me on a five-year contract, okay? Since I was thinking that you might be the only person that would think that was a good idea to have to sharpen our pencils. I don't know what you're gonna do. Personally, I think the cake burned in the oven, and I think you need a new cake because I think you have too many things that went on that don't appear to be as pristine as possible. And it's, I'm very sorry for both companies, but it's not working the way this is done. So, I don't, that's it. I got nothing else to say, except it really doesn't look very good. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment on this?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Dean Ruffridge, I'm with CRNR. And I'd like to introduce our team here tonight, I think you've met them all before. Mr. Ronenberg is here, the president of the company, Maria Lazaric, our director of community relations and recycling, as well as George Lazaric. We're very happy to be able to service the city of Newport Beach, not only in the open competitive commercial markets, but also we're very happy to be your selected contractor in Newport Coast and as well as Santa Ana Heights. Thank you very much. And also, as Mr. Harmon said, we've enjoyed a mutual agreement with the city for over 12 years in the processing of your residential waste stream. It's too bad there has to be somebody coming second place in a bidding process. CRNR believes firmly that we were the low bid in both go-arounds. If your city attorney does speak, I'd be happy to answer any questions when he's completed or at this time, whatever you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. Any other speakers? Saying none, I'll close the hearing and bring it back to council. Councilwoman Gardner?
Mrs. Oding suggested five years, you have 10 years, the rationale for that?
Yeah, 10-year contracts in the solid waste industry are very common. In fact, I'd be hard-pressed to think of a solid waste collection or processing contract that is less than 10 years. There's a significant amount of capital outlay that a company has to put forth to start processing 150 tons of material per day, or if it's buying equipment to collect refuse in a community, materials in a community, they have to put that money towards equipment, which usually has a useful life, if you will, or a book of value life of 10 years. So, 10 years is a very, very common contract for solid waste in the solid waste industry. You certainly can request five years or less, but I would suggest that that would be far more costly in the short term because you'd have to depreciate those resources far quicker. So, that's the standard.
Mark, we would need to rebid if we went to five years. I mean, that changes the whole...
That would change everything.
I understand that. And then her comment about green waste, have we...
Yeah, green waste is part of the material that is taken out of the waste stream when the city delivers the material to the processing facility. That green waste is removed. You wouldn't get to 40% without removing that green waste. You have to be careful, you know, with all due respect to Ms. Oding, you know, as far as putting a container or a location for people to dump green waste. That isn't as quick a solution as she might suggest. You have to obviously staff that area, you have to check ID to make sure it's not green waste coming in from a neighboring community, and there's a lot to it. So, it's not, you know, that's not as great an idea as it sounds on face value.
Thank you.
Mayor, for Tim Daly?
A question for you. When we introduced competition in Newport Coast, you know, we ended up saving quite a bit of money that we can use for other purposes.
Correct.
What about introducing competition to Santa Ana Heights? Where are we with that?
We have to work with the city attorney's office, and maybe I'll defer to Robin, but there's an issue there in that the city doesn't have control over districts, that the contracts are set up through districts. And my understanding is the trash in Santa Ana Heights is collected through the... Costa Mesa Sanitation District. So, we've got a little homework to do before we introduce competition there. We've talked about, or at least Aaron and I have talked about it, but we've got a little more homework to do.
Thank you.
Councilman Hen?
Mark, who was the low bidder on the first round?
Well, and therein's the problem, because that's not, well, let me explain. There was one part of the RFP document that it's in section, I believe, if you look in your RFP document, it's in section 12. And it has to do with the equipment requirement. It's on page 8 of the RFP, it's on page 39 of your report, the little handwritten number in the right-hand corner, page 39. And the only time that a tonnage is mentioned per truckload is in this section, and it reads, "Contractor will provide all tractor-trailer transfer equipment necessary to transport fully-loaded trailers," and then in parentheses, it says, "average load of 20 tons of residential refuse." If you take that 20 tons as the truckload in the original bid, the low bid was CRNR. It's the only, that's the only time that there's mention of the tonnage of what would be in a truck. If you take that 20 tons and do the calculation of the cost per ton, the low bid would be CRNR. Because that wasn't clearly set forth in the RFP document and in the bid proposal sheets that used 20 ton as your number for each load, staff felt that there was enough of confusion there between the bidders that that should be clarified and rebid. And that was the reason for it, because Rainbow used a higher load count. You take the higher, the bids were so close, you take the higher tonnage load in the truck, and Rainbow was the low bid. So, it was not clear. It was not clear, and that's why, working with the city attorney's office, we decided rather than award on guessing what the truck holds, we'd award on putting it back out and putting a firm number, and that's the 21 tons, as far as the bid process.
Aaron, you obviously reviewed this, and you're comfortable with the process as far as the, we've talked, I think they mentioned a 10-day limit, or a minimum of 10 days, and other things, other items?
Yes. The way I see this really breaking down is they're claiming that the charter provisions are related to public works contracts, as well as the public contract code, apply to this request-for-proposal process, which isn't the case. This is a request-for-proposal process relating to services. The sections that they're referencing in the charter, as well as the public contract code sections, those relate to public works, construction projects. And so, those aren't applicable to this scenario. And the timeframes that they're discussing in relation thereto are all stemming from the misconception that this is some type of public works project. As far as the unfair businesses practices go, what really matters is the net number of cost per ton. Just because one element of that, the transfer cost is negative in CRNR's bid, that does not impact the unfair business practice statutes, in my opinion. If there's any concern by the council, I feel very confident in that opinion, but I think it would be a good idea to include in the provision, a provision in the contract with CRNR that they end in fine if in the city for any challenges to the award of the Thank you very much.
Is there a motion out there somewhere? I see a lot of confused faces looking at me.
I move staff recommendation.
Okay. Second to that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, there was a question raised here about optional services and looking for guidance on optional services. We haven't really discussed that, so does that need to be a part of any motion, or...
I think that's typically what the staff negotiates in the contract, and they bring it back to us, and if we're satisfied with it, we approve it, if not...
But I think they were, I thought you were looking for guidance on whether to...
Absolutely. We can do, we do both. We negotiate those supplemental services, if you will, those additional services. But that is, Councilmember Hen is correct, that's how it's written in the report. If there's services that the council would like us to look at, additional services, we'd be happy to bring that up in negotiations with CRNR.
That's beyond the ones that were offered and discussed in the report?
That's correct.
Well, are there other services that you would recommend that we look at?
Well, I don't think that we, none that we haven't listed there. There's two that we will, obviously, one will be selling the existing transfer equipment. We have a high-dollar value, probably shouldn't show my cards with them sitting behind me, but you know, the transfer equipment that we have is in very good condition, late-model equipment. So, we certainly would want to negotiate the sale of the city's equipment. That's a significant one-time cost benefit. The other things would be taking a look at the existing capacity of the station. We're permitted, I believe, for 300 tons per day, and we're currently using 150 tons of that transfer station. So, there's unused capacity there. That does have a significant value. So, there's some things staff would recommend...
In what regard does it have a value?
I'm sorry?
In what regard does it have a value?
Well, transfer stations have a value in the sense that if you can use that capacity, you can take, much like we do, take your neighborhood trucks and put it into a transfer trailer for shipment to a...
So, you're talking about taking other people's trash into our yard and using, letting CRNR basically rent our yard for trash?
It wouldn't be renting the yard, but using that capacity, again, I've not discussed this with them, but it's possible to use that capacity for trash they collect in the city of Newport Beach.
Like what kind of trash are you talking about? Like, commercial trash?
Trash, no, not commercial trash, trash that they would pick up from, say, Newport Coast. So, rather than putting four trucks up in Newport Coast to pick up the trash and take it all the way back to Stanton, they might use that capacity to take the Newport Coast trash to the transfer station and use that for, to ship one large or two large trucks out.
Mayor, for Tim Daly?
So, aren't they kind of commingling two different contracts?
Well, no.
I mean, they're achieving efficiencies through the other...
They're achieving efficiencies, but I don't know how that would be commingling the contracts. I mean, that's just an idea. If council would, if they aren't comfortable with using that capacity, we certainly wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't approach that subject with them. you know, we wouldn't approach that subject with them, but I, it would just be an efficiency that they could use, and possibly, as it's a negotiation, there might be benefit to the city.
Councilman Curry?
Well, we have several fine companies who do business in the trash hauling business in our community. I hope they continue to do business in our community. It's, as Yogi Berra would say, it's deja vu all over again, because we had very much the same conversation almost exactly a year ago with different people in different places. I have resolved that I'm going to resolve these in favor of what is the lowest cost to taxpayers, and I think in this case, the evidence is clearly on the, to the benefit of CRNR on this bid, and hopefully, the next time Rainbow will have the opportunity to, to show their metal and another opportunity to, to win the bid as well. My only comment would be, I think it's a mistake for us to try and negotiate these agreements from the DS. We've tried that once before, that didn't work very well, and you may want to rethink our consultants who help us through these processes so that we get a better result process-wise.
Okay, Councilman Hen?
I think it would be a good idea, however, for CRNR to indemnify the city in the event of a challenge to this bid.
No, I think that's appropriate.
Entertain amendment to your motion to that effect?
Okay, it's the second final thing? Okay, any further discussion? Please vote.
The motion carries.
Okay, let me find my place here. Next item on the agenda is the preliminary traffic analysis of the City Hall and Park Site at Newport Center buildout, the Farallon extension versus the improvements at San Miguel. Before we get into this item, I'd just like to introduce it on behalf of the Building Committee, which is council members Hen, Rosansky, and myself. This item looks at access to the City Hall and the Park Site. This item's about giving guidance to the architectural teams as to that access. We're going to see some animation on the screen from the traffic engineers. That animation and the agenda item itself does not reflect the results of a formal traffic study. The animation is great technology to reflect traffic at buildout conditions in Newport Center, but it just is a technology. A formal traffic study was not done in this phase. One will likely still be done as part of the EIR for this project, but that's going to come later. But we wanted early on to give guidance to the design teams as to what to do about, one, overall access to the site, two, whether Farallon should be extended through to MacArthur. If Farallon does not extend through, then what are our other options? What kind of intersection and traffic improvements can we make that provide a good, solid alternative to what the traffic engineers say is the best option? That's punching Farallon through. But punching Farallon through may not be the best option for the design of the City Hall and the Park Site. So, again, just to reiterate, this is a qualitative analysis, but not a formal traffic study. The formal traffic study will be done as part of the CEQA review for the overall project. Depending on what the city council designs, decides tonight, we will either direct the design teams to pursue a City Hall and Park plan that does or does not include Farallon extending through. If the council decides that Aralon should not punch through, then the extended median plan that you're going to see up here is one of many options that still needs analysis. I, I think what we were trying to do in this was trying to determine whether Farallon would actually have to go through or not, and not try and solve what exactly the final design solution is going to be to be handling the traffic around the City Hall site. I think the traffic analysis, we did show that there was not a significant contribution to the traffic in the area, but it did not diminish the fact that we know that there are traffic issues in this portion of Newport Center that needs to be addressed, and we'll have to address those in separate studies and as separate issues, but we're merely looking to give direction to the architects that are going to be participating in the design competition. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Batum, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, you said it well, this is certainly a qualitative study for potential traffic circulation and access, and our real goal is here, is to really kind of explore ideas that we can give guidance to the architects. I will say that, in general, we, we've kind of observed two, two separate results, and one was that the City Hall traffic in itself didn't really significantly affect the current or future traffic conditions to the extent it would, would cause major changes in the operation of those intersections. But one thing we do know is that we do have operational issues at the San Miguel Road, Avocado and, and MacArthur intersections, and, and that we do have, we are going to present tonight a couple of different alternatives, and I think, as you said, as you stated, these are not the only alternatives, these are just two potential alternatives that we could look at. Certainly, when we get to the point where we've defined our City Hall, what's going to be in it, how many square feet, how many employees, what kind of services, then we can explore a very thorough traffic analysis and look at potentially multiple options in the context of an EIR to come up with the best solution. But I think this helps give us some guidance tonight on what kind of options there are, and each, each one of these options has pros and cons, and certainly, we're looking for your direction in where, if we should explore options further, or to eliminate certain options, or, and hopefully, be able to give guidance to our architectural designers that will, that will be kind of coming up with their ideas during the design competition. I also want to say that in developing these alternatives, we've looked at several variations and options. Not all of them will be shown on these alternatives. The traffic engineers will speak to some of those if folks have questions regarding those. And I also want to say that we structured these options to show buildout, the general plan buildout. So, we're, we're including all of the potential development that could occur under the general plan, as well as, we're assuming all the improvements that would be required under the general plan would be built, and these, these improvements will include a triple-left turn at San Joaquin onto, onto MacArthur, an extra-through lane at that same intersection northbound on MacArthur, and as well as additional turn lanes on San Miguel, go to a triple-left at San Miguel onto MacArthur. So, we're trying to kind of make sure we're comparing apples to apples here. We've selected the firm of RBF Consulting to help us with this, and with us tonight is Mike Erickson from that firm. Also, on our team is Joe Faust from Austin Faust, who will hopefully be able to show us the animations and the alternatives that we've come up with, and hopefully, we'll have some good discussion on, on where to go next with this. And I'll, with that, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Joe Faust. I'm a principal of the firm, Austin Faust Associates, and this project is a real pleasure for me. This is a challenge. I'm going to introduce, well, all your projects are a challenge, but this one, this one is a challenge in a little bit different way. This is kind of a technical challenge for us traffic engineers. Here in Newport Beach, you hear all about the ICU methodology that you form, and, and we're going to talk about a different kind of methodology tonight. You've heard Councilman Webb probably talk about this for a long time, the existing congestion on San Miguel between Avocado and MacArthur, that that's an operational problem, one that is, doesn't necessarily point it out by your conventional ICU methodology. So, we've taken it another step in terms of the technology and the analytical tools we have, and I'm going to present to you in, in just a few minutes here, and I am going to hope to be brief, and I will be here for your questions. But we have, what I'm going to, I like to call it my ant, or a little bit of a dog-and-pony show, but it's actually a simulation, an actual simulation of the traffic flow. You'll see the cars running around through the intersections, and it's kind of like you had an opportunity to take a helicopter and go out there and see these alternatives implemented literally overnight, and see how the traffic would, would react to them and how they would flow. In terms of, of the, can I have a little, thank you. In terms of the alternatives, I'm going to show you two, and the two are the, certainly the, perhaps the most community-sensitive, and the first one is, is simply the project which would extend a Farallon from Avocado onto MacArthur and create a T-intersection here, and it would be a, basically a signalized T-intersection. Of course, that has the potential of segregating the park and making two sites out of it, and certainly, I, as, as well as all of you, understand the issues and the sensitivity with regard to that subject and that matter. But we're going to look at what if, we have the, the option here of, despite the, the community concerns, it would, we, we can look at this in a test laboratory and see if it works or how well it works. The second alternative that we're going to look at is, is concerns itself with, with San Miguel. And in this alternative, again, this is San Miguel from Newport Center to MacArthur, what we would, would be looking to do in here is essentially clean up this intersection in terms of the congestion that occurs there now by implementing a raised median along San Miguel. What that would in effect do is would create a right-turn-only type of, almost a driveway, if you will, but the movements on Avocado would simply be right turns out or a right turn in. There would be no through traffic, and there would be no left-turn traffic. The advantage to that is that it provide, it effectively eliminates what is the existing problem of two four-way intersections signalized within a couple three-hundred feet of one another. The downside of this particular median is that we have, in the morning, coming in, a very heavy left-turn movement that comes in MacArthur, makes a left turn and goes down. We have some turns that go up. We have, in the afternoon, we have a fairly heavy left turn going out, and of course, we have a left turn going out this way. The downside of this whole median is it would eliminate those turning movements, except for the right turns here, and they would have to find new ways to travel to and from Newport Center. Much of that traffic is headed into this area here, so we have done a manual reassignment of that traffic, and you'll see the results of that in just a minute. Again, I caution you, though, that by implementing this raised median, the access to, to the medical facilities here and the office of facilities here would be changed dramatically. Yes, Councilman?
How would our public safety vehicles get through if they had to? What would be the path there? I've never seen this kind of a setup.
Well, I don't believe they would. They would have to adjust their travel patterns the same as any other vehicle if it's a raised median.
This would literally be, and again, that's probably another impact of this, these would become effectively right-turn driveways. There would be no vehicles that would move either north or in south, if that's what we're going to call Avocado, or straight through. There would also be no left turns for vehicles to go from Avocado to turn left to go to MacArthur, or similarly, come north on Avocado and turn left to go toward Newport Center. Similarly, to the, the left turns that, that would be off of Avocado, there would also be no left turns for Miguel, San Miguel, to go up Avocado, but the biggest turn volume that would not occur now is some five-hundred vehicles an hour that are coming in in the morning, or even the afternoon, but particularly the morning, and turning left to go down Avocado. That's over five to six-hundred vehicles an hour. So, that would be a major redistribution, redistribution of all of the traffic in this intersection, except that traffic that now turns right. The other, a, a, a smaller impact that we'll show you in just a minute is that even though this intersection would, would simply be through movements on San Miguel and right-turn movements off of or onto Avocado, we would still need a traffic signal. You will see that the volume of right turning coming, not from necessarily City Hall, but certainly in the evening, coming up and making a right turn here, the flow of traffic coming on, from Newport Center, I'm going to call it eastbound, would, would be so heavy that you need a signal here to interrupt that or stop that traffic so these right turners could get in, and I, I'll show that. The other thing that we would have to have is the signal there if, and we, and as I suspect, with having a park here and this, all of this here, we needed to accommodate pedestrians, so. So, it would be a right-turn driveway with signalization, a, a situation you, I, I don't know if I've ever seen it, but it's very rare, to be sure.
And where do you anticipate those five-hundred vehicles would go? I mean, they're going to Corporate Plaza, but how are they going to...
Some, a lot of them are coming on MacArthur and making the right, followed by the left. For that particular movement, we've assigned most of it to continue on around, and that would mean they would come in this way. One of the risks, I think, of this plan, and that's the thing I, I want to point out, is that we would try to maintain access to, to this large parking lot here. It's, assuming we're able to do that, and this striping plan here shows that we would be able to do that, we're setting up a real potential for using the parking lot as a cut through in lieu of making your left here and another left downstream somewhere to go right through the parking, particularly if you're going to one of those buildings up there. So, again, the alternative, just like the Farallon extension, has, is fraught with, with risks involved in it, but again, we do have, we do have some alternatives here, and we'll deal with each one of these problems as we go along. So, it's not suggesting that this is the best alternative, it's, it's a trade-off of good and bad. I'm going to show you the simulation of these two, and, and we can do the same thing with other alternatives if, if we identified, and we had some other alternatives that we looked at. But I, I will say, kind of a, just a summary of the whole thing is that purely from the traffic engineer's point of view, and I know that you on the DIAS can't take that perspective, that's my luxury down here. The, the Farallon extension, with all the controversies and all the community involvement that will be there, we may have the same situation or, or worse with, with a potential median on San Miguel. That, that simply remains to be seen. But in terms of the pure engineering, this solution, forgetting the controversies or anything, just looking at, the Farallon solution provides about a twenty, fifteen to twenty percent better solution in terms of the total delay of the whole system than the, the median solution. But again, I don't think that's a compelling argument one way or another. I think the, the, the community involvement and input are going to far outweigh those, those types of, of marginal benefit. But let me show you three quick simulations. The first one is going to be the existing traffic, which, which will, will, and this is using existing traffic volumes, which will show the extent of the congestion, the localized congestion that occurs right here. It shows it for the whole system, but I want to focus on this, because this, one of the intents and one of the challenges of this project for me was, was to clean up that quote "mess," if you will. And I think either one, this solution or the, or the Farallon you looked at earlier, do a marvelous job of cleaning up that situation. Now, the other effects on it, that's, that's, like I said, that's something I have the luxury of the traffic engineer to have the blinders on, and you don't have that luxury.
Joe, is this in peak hour here, then?
What I'm going to show, I have it for the morning peak hour and the afternoon peak hour, but the afternoon peak hour is a little, is the worst of the two, so if you want to see, you know, a whole bunch of these, we got them for you, but I'm going to show you basically three. The, the afternoon PM peak hour in, under existing conditions, and then the afternoon peak hour under the Farallon extension option, and the afternoon peak hour under the San Miguel median option. And again, in each one of these cases, I am using the volume, the volume, it won't look it, but it is the same in all cases, and it's the buildout volume. The difference is being, if you put in a median like this, you, you have to redirect some of that, all that through and left-turning traffic that occurred here has to go some other way, so I've redirected it. The same way with the, with the, and I'll get to these into the Farallon extension, a lot of the traffic that's coming up to, to go north on Harbor, if they could avoid this intersection, would, would use the Farallon extension, and that'll be evident from the demonstrations.
Just to clarify, Joe, because you did just mention a term, the buildout volume. That buildout volume is all the contemplated development under the existing general plan, including the new City Hall... including the new City Hall project.
That's correct. Incidentally, I know that it probably will a lot of times fall on deaf ears, but again, simply the traffic engineer talking. I'm going to show you with City Hall in here, but one of our conclusions, one of the, that's very obvious, apparent to me is despite, you know, the size of City Hall, it doesn't make a lot of difference in the magnitude of the congestion that we're talking about.
So whether City Hall is there or not there, it doesn't really matter?
Yeah, under what I'm going to show you, City Hall is in there, yes, along with all the rest of the development. This is, this is basically existing conditions that we see out there now. You'll see traffic backing up here and this is at about a little after 5:00. As you go toward 5:30, it gets a little more, but you can see the traffic is queued up on here having difficult time. It does clear out in here, but we'll see as I move this along that it backs, you will see a backup of traffic in through here as I take it a little bit further. We could sit here and watch this as we want, but I want to get, try to get through. We can look at it. You begin to see as we get well into the peak hour, we're going to get queues here, we're going to get queues here, and they're not going to clear in the single cycle. You'll see some, you'll see them back up and at times they may back up as far as Newport Center Drive. But they don't clear, in other words, they fill up this, this goes and then they can't move their way through. In terms of the rest of the Newport Center moves reasonably well, but in other alternatives that I'm going to show you, we will be distributing a lot of this traffic or some of this traffic to other routes that go around here. So you can see this is the type of congestion that everybody is talking about and that they don't clear in a single cycle. I mean, sometimes two or three cycles to get through. Yes. So that's just a graphical illustration and that's, again, under the ICU, well, it moved back to the 5:00 now, but I was, what I was, the point I was going to make that if you isolate, analyze these two intersections as isolated, individually, they, the ICU calculation process doesn't indicate the severness of the delay at either one of them. So when you look at them as a system, and we're looking at the whole system here, you get a significantly reduced level of service. Now I want to show you with the next alternative, or the first alternative that we were talking about, and that's the, in this case, it's the Farallon extension. What you're going to see, now this is, I'll move it down here just to show you that it is indeed there, the Farallon extension.
There you see it?
There it is, and you'll see that Farallon will clear out in one cycle. I mean, it cleared the whole thing out. But it really, what the point I wanted to make in this one is again, we're talking at this intersection, you'll see a little bit of a queue, you'll see almost virtually no queue here, but it's going to clear out in one cycle all the time. So there it goes, yes, a lot of traffic moving that way, but it clears out. So what has happened here is a great deal of the traffic that was coming in here turning left or coming up here and turning this way, you see it coming through here and going out this way. What happens here is we've shifted a lot of traffic from this roadway here to this roadway here. Again, it's a simple pattern. A lot of, most of the traffic that's going through here is making the left turn to go north. Only about 15 or 20 percent are making the right turn. So it's a heavy coming through and making, you can see the volume of traffic that's making the left turns there. So the effect of this Farallon extension is to shift traffic away from that particular segment and onto this segment. So the volume of traffic that's moving in this scenario is the same volume of traffic that moves with or without Farallon and it's the volume that comes from the build-out traffic model. Now I'm going to show, the next one I want to show is the median option that we have up there. Again, this is a, again, I hope it demonstrates, this is working quite well compared to the existing and so traffic is moving at a very acceptable level of service. This is the situ, I'm going to zoom in a little bit. The raised median is simulated by those yellow lines there. That's a raised median. You'll see nobody do anything in this intersection except make a right turn or go straight through, but I'm going to bring it up so you can see it a little more vividly. Again, this is the raised median that goes through here, so all this traffic will turn, that's all turned right or that car, you saw him turn right in there, also coming out of avocado, they can turn right to go up or turn right to come down, but no through traffic this way and no left turns off of San Miguel. Once again, you see a little bit of a queue develop in this case, but throughout this whole cycle, again, it fills up in here, but this will clear out. The earlier point that I made about the volume, there is a signal right here. It's simulated, you can kind of see a little red signal, but without that signal, this flow would be so constant and this backup would be that this right turning traffic wouldn't find enough gaps to get in. So even though it's only a right turn driveway, it's a signalized right turn driveway. Otherwise, the roughly 600 right turners wouldn't have an opportunity to get in there because a lot of them want to go into the left turn lane. So they're not, this, this traffic is not making a right turn followed by a right, they're making a right turn followed mostly by a left or maybe straight through to go out to San Miguel. But again, the situation that we're looking at here does produce a significantly improved, in fact, I would call it acceptable, level of service for San Miguel to operate in this area here. Somewhat comparable to the Farallon extension, maybe as I said, 15 percent, the Farallon might produce an overall 15 percent better and a little bit more reserved capacity for the future, but both of these alternatives deal with the situation and produce a level of service that's acceptable. Yes.
Question, having been in that right turn, were you then going to go left north up MacArthur? So the, and with the signal, it helps a little bit, but it's still, you know, a challenge.
Well, this would be effectively dual right turn lanes and yes, depend, if you wanted to be on the inside one, you're mostly, and you'll see the cars doing, mostly they're on the outside of those lanes because they want to get into that left turn pocket. And again, the signals have to be coordinated so that there is someplace for them to go. When this, when those right turners get the, when this traffic stops here, that has to be cleared out. So we have what we call an inside clearance interval so that when they get the green light, there's a place for them to go, not that there's a red light here. You can see them going, when they're going, that's going, that's due. So there's some thought that went into the phasing and synchronization of this signal operation. But again, the bottom line, again, this to illustrate at this point what we have for you is there are some options that can clean it up. All of the options are fraught with downside, so it's going to be a, compare the advantages and disadvantages of all of them. Now I can show you more of those, but it's the same dog and pony show for the morning.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Faust? Councilman Curry?
Oh, well, if you want to, we've modeled this whole, I'll show this.
Yeah, I think one thing to add to that alternative is that in order for that alternative to work, we have to signalize the intersection of Anacapa and Newport Coast, I mean Newport Center Drive.
Yeah, when we, when we shift all of this traffic from being able to turn, well, coming down MacArthur, making a left turn here, we're shifting it to a new pattern around like this, we need to create signalization at these locations because that's five or 600 left turns that we've shifted from this location to someplace else. So we need to create a new signalized intersection at Anacapa and possibly even down at Farallon. But this simulation shows that signal probably could operate, that intersection could operate as stop control. But there are some, like I said, there's some, it takes, there's some refinement that needs to be done here. This thing is not ready to go, but it is good enough for me to stand up here in a straight face, tell you there are some viable options that are available to you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Curry, did you have a question, Mr. Faust?
If I could just, are these the only two options that we've identified that have viable viability in terms of addressing the traffic issues when City Hall goes in there?
Well, I would, if you put that word viability, we looked at ever, incidentally, the numbering of the Farallon extent is alternate six, if you look very carefully on there, and the median is alternate eight. We looked at several other alternatives, including right turn in and out, exit, off, directly into the site from MacArthur. We looked at creating a T intersection at avocado and San Miguel, we, from both ways. So there were some other alternatives. They seem to have even more problems associated with them than the results that they produced. So these were the two best performing in terms of the pure traffic engineering. Like I said, that luxury that I have that you don't. But there are other alternatives that we have analyzed and there are others that I'm sure will be identified.
Thank you.
Councilman Gardner?
Well, I had a question, not for Mr. Faust, but for the committee, if that's all right. Does anybody else have a question for him before I go ahead?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
You're recommending number one, which does not include the Farallon option, and I think it'd be helpful for people to understand how you reach that recommendation.
Okay, I'll take a stab at it. First of all, we're not recommending the San Miguel solution that's up there, we're just saying that that's, that's a solution that works to deal with the existing traffic congestion, the future traffic congestion that build out in Newport Center with the City Hall and that Farallon does not have to be punched through. Our main objective here is to give directions to the architects and not solve a larger traffic problem. There's a lot of study that would have to go on, property owners have to be notified, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, and so I'm assuming that in your discussions, you were looking at things beyond traffic as far as the Farallon impact, and I think that would be good for people to hear.
Well, we were. We looked at the impact on the site plan, the park and the City Hall, looked at all of those things and coming up with the recommendation that we made. We also looked at what value there would be to have right in, right turn out access from MacArthur Boulevard, which the consultant studied and it didn't appear to provide any appreciable improvement to the situation. And then we also looked at what we could do with the access to the Central Library and that's why we made the recommendation of the driveway going through. So we took all those things into consideration and felt that this was the best recommendation to present to the city council for the direction to give to the architects to design the new City Hall, realizing that there would have to be a lot of work in the future dealing with the alternatives that were identified in dealing with San Miguel, avocado and MacArthur. So I hope that answers your question. Mike or Steve, do you have any comments you want to add to that?
I would just say we were not solely motivated here about having the most efficient traffic movement solution. We were trying to blend, you know, a series of imperatives here to come to a conclusion whether or not there was an alternative besides Farallon.
Yeah, well, then I think that's what I, people want to hear is because if someone just looks at this and sees, oh, well, Farallon seems like the most logical, but there are all these other considerations that went into play in coming to that decision.
Well, one of the key questions we asked the traffic engineers when they gave us Farallon is the traffic engineer's preferred solution, you know, what percentage is solved by the, by the San Miguel solution and, you know, it's anywhere from 80, 85 percent, somewhere in there of solving, from their standpoint as traffic engineers, what the problem is. And that's when we started taking a look at the other factors and deciding whether it's worth achieving that extra 15 percent efficiency to sacrifice other things such as dividing the park and the City Hall in half. Okay, with that, I'll open it to any public comments.
Somebody has to go first. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Deborah Allen. I live across the street from the park. I want to tell you that I salute council members Hen Rosansky and Mayor Selich for a very sensitive job on the building committee. You were not, as I understand it, trying to, trying to deal with all the traffic problems in Newport Center. I understand that you had to study them, but I appreciate the fact that the committee recognized that what you, at least I understand you to be doing tonight is sending direction to the architects for the design competition for the design of the City Hall and the park and giving them the constraints that you would require of those designs. I personally firmly support the building committee's recommendation number one with no extension of Farallon. I'm very much opposed to alternative number three, which is the Farallon extension for all the reasons that you know, it cuts the park in half, it would cause another intersection on MacArthur Boulevard, it would run through traffic from Newport Center. A matter of fact, I hadn't realized how really devastating that would be to the park until I saw Mr. Faust's analysis tonight. My goodness, you'd basically be running a mini freeway through the center of the park. It would just be dreadful. I also would like to say that I support exhibit D to the staff report, which is the separate entrance to the library and City Hall. That seems to make a lot of sense because that Corona Doma Plaza library intersection on avocado is a congestion problem and it does sort of make sense that now that we're going to have a City Hall there, that the City Hall and the library share an entrance onto avocado and then the commercial area sort of has its own, which seems to make a lot of sense. Personally, I think it's a very excellent idea to keep the options open for other possible traffic solutions to the avocado, San Miguel, MacArthur intersection problem. I understand that what you're currently planning on doing is putting in a third left turn lane from eastbound San Miguel to northbound MacArthur, which will alleviate a substantial amount of that problem that's turning left now. And other than that, you're talking about the traffic at build out. And we have lots of time to work on that solution. I don't think it needs to be part of the design criteria for the, for the architects to design City Hall and the park, and I'm glad that you made it clear that that really wasn't, you know, wasn't really essential that they come up with a solution for that tonight. So with that, thank you very much. Oh, one other thing I'd like to point out, and this is just a clarification. The general design parameters as amended is in exhibit to the staff report. I think it is exhibit C to the staff report. It in and of itself has exhibits A through F attached to it. And I just want to make sure that however the minutes of this meeting come out tonight, if there's any references to exhibit C, exhibit A, exhibit F, that it's clear whether you're talking about the exhibits A through D to the staff report or exhibits Exhibits A through D to the staff report, or Exhibits A through F to the design parameters. It just struck me that that might be confusing, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar. I should say I have a little background in this kind of thing, too, so it seems kind of ridiculous. Why do we have roads? We have roads to move traffic. We have roads to move traffic cleanly. We put in roads where traffic is supposed to go, where it makes it go cleanly. When you do things like that median down the center, you're going to have a lot of people that don't know exactly where they're going, if they haven't been to the medical centers or something like that very often, go in there and do the loop-de-loop and try and come out and do a left turn across that real busy freeway we've now created going into Newport Center, and that hugely busy freeway we've created going into Newport Center with high-speed road now because there's no, you know, they're not going to be stopping very much at, at Avocado going across, and, and you're going to have more accidents, you're going to have a terrible traffic situation. Plus, one of the things they tried to do at Irvine was bring the people into Newport Center, not around that circle, to get them into the center, to get them into where they want to go, and then they come out. They don't go around the circle all the time. If you're going to create a traffic solution that sends everybody around that circle all the time, you're going to make a mess out of that. I mean, you're making lefts onto that, you're going down a block, you're making lefts off of that. That, it just isn't a very reasonable solution. Far lawn coming through has obvious good sense. A right-hand turn lane on the far lawn brings traffic across that, or a left-hand turn down Avocado to get into the city things. It splits the traffic, gives you double the amount of capacity. I mean, it does make a lot of sense. It always has. The other thing is, is where you're bringing this in at a library, you're much better to go on the far lawn and bring your, some of your traffic on to that than go into the library parking lot. The library parking lot is going to be quite a bit smaller than the City Hall parking lot, so then they're going to drive through that onto a new road that we've got that was where the book pickup is, onto Avocado, then up a ways, and then go back into the parking lot that we have for City Hall. I mean, this, we have now got people that are going to go, they're going to make mincemeat out of this place, they're going to look like rodents trying to figure their way out across it. This does not make sense. It isn't something that you would design. It certainly isn't something you would start with, and I can't believe, right now, the city seems to be, have that as their prime thing, is how to mess up traffic. When we looked at today at Corona Del Mar, and we're looking at all these new gardeners we're going to put on PCH, every time we put a gardener there, we cut off a lane of traffic. That means that we go down to one lane of traffic on PCH. It doesn't work. Now you've created all these gardeners going on PCH, it's going to mess that up forever. Now you're going to do the same thing for Newport Center? All you're going to do is keep people from using it.
Thanks, Dick.
Dick, I'm sorry, I just have to clarify something. When you say a gardener, what?
You're talking about you're going to have special servicing of all the trees all along PCH and Corona Del Mar.
Maintaining the median.
Maintaining the median. Every time those people come out and they're city-type people or working for the city, they block off a lane of traffic so that they have more access without any kind of traffic problem. Before, we had talked about putting three lanes on either side, so we could take the parking lane and make it into a one where if you're working in the middle, you could do that, or working on the side, you could do that, but you still kept two lanes going on, at minimum, on each side of the highway. We don't have that. You don't have any way of doing that here. So you, right now, you're just creating problems without a way to solve them.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Jan Van Der Stuidt. I live in Newport Heights. I would like to support the Building Committee recommendation and have it within the general design parameters that you not push through far lawn through the center of the park. I think that the intent of the voters in Measure B was that City Hall, it's City Hall in the park. It's not City Hall separated from the park by a freeway. So I think that if far lawn is pushed through based on efficiencies or traffic movement, then you destroy the whole concept that the people voted on in, for City Hall in the park. So for that reason, I think you can look at different alternatives. I'm not sure that the median at San Miguel was the best idea. Bill Ficker wrote you a letter about certain other alternatives that you might consider, including opening up the intersection of Avocado and San Joaquin. That intersection right now, see, is artificially blocked off. I think that that, opening up that intersection could increase that traffic movement in that direction rather than having it all be on San Miguel. But in any case, I think for the purposes of the design parameters for City Hall, then you should do as the Building Committee suggests and say that is the intent, not to have far lawn be pushed through. By the same token, last meeting, you voted to say that it was the intent of the City Council for the design parameters to have a natural park in the northern parcel, but the design parameters still call for the language that says that acreage has been proposed as a natural park, when last meeting you said that the intent is a natural park, and that's a critical decision, a difference, because it was brought up in the, the Design Committee, City Hall Design Committee, as to whether or not that was a requirement, and I think that should be clarified, that you might change the language in the design parameters to reflect last meeting's vote. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Ron Hendrickson. I live in the Port Streets. I wanted to first make a couple of comments. Major, when I heard earlier this evening from a couple of persons, the City Hall would have little impact on Newport Center traffic at build-out, and that is a statement that I hope a lot of people listen to because there were some people in town that spoke out vociferously that the City Hall was going to create gridlock, and it is quite clear that that is not the case. Another item, which is in the design parameters, which is part of this package tonight, which we haven't talked about, and no, no need to talk about it tonight, but a statement that that says in there, preliminary geology report indicates no unique or water table issues, and that's another issue that during this recent campaign was blasted all around, that we're going to have a river under the City Hall, so it's quite clear that we have no problems like that. I am a little concerned with, well, I think we all are concerned with the rapidity that we have to make this decision tonight. I think it's really unfortunate. I think it's unfortunate that not necessarily this council, but that previous councils didn't start paying attention to some of the traffic problems we have in Newport Center. Instead of, in essence, everything is boiling up to we got to make a decision tonight. And it seems to me that, you know, I understand why you have to make the decision tonight because I am supportive of getting, keeping the City Hall moving along. But in looking at the action item that you have, you're, actually, there's like five items in your action item, I would suggest that the one that talks about these, these options for changing the traffic pattern that would solve, you know, eighty percent, eighty-five percent of the problem as opposed to the far lawn extension, but it seems to me you need to say something like this, that to accommodate build-out conditions in Newport Center, traffic consultants shall continue analysis to determine necessary traffic control improvements and work with property owners to provide additional means of access to their properties, establishing a steering committee with representatives from the Newport Center Association, the Irvine Company, Medical Plaza, and Block 400 property owners, having them have a representative, and even residents. I mean, I, I'm a resident up on North San Miguel, East San Miguel, and I know that, you know, I can figure it out, but I can, a lot of people are going to have really difficult problems figuring out what we saw here tonight, and that's not to say that, you know, that's not the solution, but boy, there's going to be a real education process that's going to be necessary if we end up with some things like that. And it's unfortunate because Newport Center is a great place, and I, I'm just hopeful that the Irvine Company will be involved in these discussions because they take credit for Newport Center, and it looks like it could be getting fouled up a little bit, but maybe it's the only way to do it. I also, I wanted to question Mr. Mayor, since the general design parameters are part of the package, are they open for comment tonight? I know Mr. Van Der Stuidt just made a comment and...
No, it's just the, it's just the parameter dealing with the access to City Hall and the Corona Del Mar Plaza considerations.
Okay, well, just, just one, one point I have, Sarah, but there's a reference in there, the Southernmost Meadow, and nobody's going to know where the Southernmost Meadow is. I suggest that some consideration be given to how that might be reworded, and, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll close publicly, comment, and bring it back to, back to the council. Councilman Curry?
Well, first of all, I would just say to the members of the committee, the demonstration here today certainly shows the difficulties faced with this site and the challenges in providing for good circulation. I would agree with the speakers who have endorsed a recommendation, number one, in terms of the alternative. I would note when Mr. Ficker was with us three weeks ago, he also opposed the extension of far lawn, and that's something I think both of us agree on in terms of the proper solution for this area, not to say that the San Miguel interchange improvements are necessarily the right answer, but I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, the, the way the committee has continued to keep its option open as you look at ways to, to deal with that. So I would support recommendation number one in the staff report, and I would move its adoption.
It's actually recommendation one and two.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, just to kind of paraphrase, then, the balancing act of the committee was San Miguel is a good solution, and then that enables you to retain, you know, other things such as the site remaining intact. Is that kind of the thought process?
Correct.
Okay, and then as far as these medians and, and what we saw this evening, nothing's being locked in, we're going to continue to refine that process.
Yeah, we're not proposing anything on that. It's just to show that there are alternative ways to deal with the situation.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments?
Just one other quick comment. When we do get to the point of identifying the alternative solution very clearly, there will have to be a collaborative effort of the landowners and the users of those areas as we're working toward a solution, so...
Yeah, obviously, that's a whole separate project, a whole separate effort. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is motion for reconsideration. Madam clerk?
Motion for reconsideration is a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the councilmembers who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, we're adjourned.